We didn't record. Six o'clock, and we're calling the main to order. Okay. Six o'clock, calling main to order. We'll start with the pledge allegiance and turn to milk. We'll leave it.
Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alrighty. Rule call.
Um Milton, no director is present and with no conflicts in interest.
No check president, no conflicts of interest.
Sam, we have only no conflict or interest. Their parts inside the house.
Do you mind if I just steal a couple?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. We have. Mary Palmer wants to see. Oh, you want to see? Sure.
Right now. Um, my name's Mary Palmer and my husband and I would like.
You recorded, you wanna come up?
Great, thank you.
My name's Mary Palmer and my husband and I would like the city to vacate. Some city streets on our property and some alleyways and I brought a map. Showing which those are and then there's one, we don't know. If it's gonna have an impact or not, so there might be three streets and two alleyways.
And that would be Pine May?
Pine May and maybe more.
Is that on the backside or?
It's on the top.
Oh.
Yeah, on the top between us and the Martinez that moved up there. And that's it. So. Um, I know the benefit that we're gaining from, you know, doing this, but is there any benefit for cities? Are doing this or is it just making more work for everybody? Basically, uh, is this? Going to help the city in any way, us doing this? No, just part of city business.
Yeah, is it city property?
It's city property that they're, yeah.
And so what is actually vacating, it means, means we're handing over them the property.
So the street will continue?
Which is not really a street now, right?
No, none of them.
Not right now.
They're not usable as streets.
No, they did go right into the creek, across our property and down into the creek.
So it doesn't hurt us any to get rid of them.
So our tax collection is not ba- is it based only on improvements? Or do we get taxes off of the property as well? If it goes to private?
If it goes, I, I don't know the question to that, if it goes private, I don't know. I'm sure that that would increase their property taxes.
We should give more property taxes. It won't be much, but so does that take something off of the cities?
Yeah, I know for the fire department, it's only, the taxes only on improvements. But I don't know about the real property tax.
So the city.
So it would be additional taxable property for the taxes due to city. If we vacated them.
Uh, we'll be paying more taxes. To the, to the city get real.
It will to the county.
It goes to county and we get a portion of that money back from the county. It's weird.
Well, we'll, we'll need to look into it for sure, but that's, that's what I'm thinking probably, Mary.
Okay.
And I'm interested too, cause I'm probably in the same boat.
I think a lot of homeowners are.
Yeah.
Are you the fellow that lives at the bottom there on, on the other side of?
I live right below Brian Dale.
Brian Dale, okay, hi. We live right above Brian.
Okay.
Haven't met you yet.
Mary, this is John, John, this is my.
You'll probably have one too in Texas.
So one more, there was planning to put a road there and you just would have owned lots on either side of it? Or is there a road through one parcel?
Both parcels, there's three parcels, right? You've got alleys.
But not a developed road, I mean, her driveway is somewhat developed and that's one of them is being vacated is her lower driveway. And it actually goes down to her barn and stuff, so they, they utilize that all the time right now.
Yeah, yeah, we drive that.
The other two chunks above run just through her tree farm and on the backside of her property, the other one.
Exactly.
Yeah. You don't plan on developing or building houses or anything there or?
Well, I eventually, maybe Ben would wanna build a house on top, in that top lot. So that's one of the reasons we would be doing this, to make sure he could build something up there, although. Um, I, I don't think that's a root for a problem, because we own one through 10 there, the lots, one through 10.
We just, we, we're taking in everything you're saying.
Right, I know.
We can't make a decision on it tonight, you have to come back.
No.
So we're taking in all the information, Pine May, more.
Would you like this thing?
Yeah.
Yes, yes, if you have any documentation and then just to review, Brian also wrote all the numbers off of the.
So then you'd probably like to also know the answer on the, the tax.
Uh, I assume we'll find that out soon enough. Know what I mean?
Yeah. Is you up in the county, right?
Yeah, Patty leaks anyway, she probably get an idea what's going on there.
How should you be willing to talk to them?
Then I can call her anytime and ask her. I mean, we're gonna do it, so.
So for business like this, I'm guessing we're gonna go talk to like the lawyer or somebody?
Yeah, we'll have to, we'll have to have vacation.
But we don't have to wait until the county council meeting.
Yes, you do. This is not on the agenda posted a week in advance, so no, no action is getting made.
But is it something that we can work on between meetings?
Yes, yes, definitely.
The only question I have is, um. So we're giving up some roadway.
Yes, we're giving up property.
Well, I just wanna make sure the county's not gonna say, oh, well, you don't have as many roads, we don't, you don't need as much money. I have no idea, but that, that could, I don't know.
Yeah, the question to the county should be improved roads, cause everything that I've seen, at least tax wise and the little snippets of stuff that I've read have all been established.
Yeah, developed.
And these don't exist.
And these are basically if PEC got bigger and the map is littered with them up here, I don't know how many of those have been vacated or not, but they're all over the place. Like roads where you wouldn't stick a road either, you know what I mean? It's almost like a plot. You know what I mean, for like alleyways and.
Yeah, there's nothing to see there.
That's exactly what.
Right.
So they haven't been doing anything to those roads.
Yeah.
And then here's the roads.
I'm interested in doing the same with that thing.
Do you have streets or alleyways?
There should be a road, there's a power line that comes down off a pine and my little driveway kinda comes down like this and cuts right across. It would take out like half of the front of my driveway and then part of Elaine's fence. You know, and then it gets really steep as it goes down towards.
Towards Marion.
Yeah.
Towards Malibu. Like everything there is.
Yeah, yeah. And I think actually.
I thought it was too, cause I thought Sarah did.
Milton, Milton, I think the, did the Betty and Bob already do that to that alleyway at your house?
That was vacated before we walked, yeah.
Yeah.
For the whole walk.
I think that Hollins did that all at the same time.
We made vacated a lot of stuff, that was a lot of Sarah Walz's tournament deal on that and stuff anyway. I came to that meeting and I'm, and my problem with them was that someday they picked my up sewer, okay? That they can, in my opinion, they could have the land and do what they want to with it. But not build on top of that in case we have to run a sewer line down through there or a water line or whatever in future and stuff. So that's something you really wanna look at on this and stuff and, and I don't, it don't bother me to give the land to people or whatever, but we just need to have something that says we can lay a sewer line down.
Maybe it's an easement, not a vaca- maybe it's an easement, not a vaca.
And I would be game for that, I mean, I'm, this is her deal, not mine, but I have a power line going right down.
Yeah, I think probably a lot of those alleys were put in there when they were anticipating delivering coal and the test.
Right.
Well, the relevant set up a lot of them.
Yeah.
Yeah, so if a lawyer probably has to figure that out, I don't know.
We, we would definitely run it by him just to make sure that everything is legal, so to protect you, not just us, but also to protect you as well.
And then if, if we.
It would be a shame if somebody put a sewer in.
Municipal things or something.
Right, yeah, because my understanding is with EPA and DEQ and stuff, septic's are. Polluting, polluting the ground, so I know a couple of small towns have had been forced to go to septic sewers, uh, sewers instead of septic. So hopefully we don't have to do that.
I'd like to see. A lot of the city would have a minimum one acre for a septic.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Or a minimum five acre for a septic.
And ours would be five acres per septic.
Right.
Well, city ain't that way, but county I know is that way, yeah, five acres for a house spot anyway, septic, but cities tight, tight, so.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah, so we will, we will, I'll get ahold of you and let you know.
Thank you very much.
What's going on, what kind of progress we're making.
Okay.
Alrighty, moving on. Do we have any other citizen comments?
I have one, but I don't know if it's just part of old business, it's a few, it's on, it's on the agenda, it says construction existed.
We can let you talk then if you want.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, so I'm John Simper, I probably could talk loud enough. So I just wanted to make sure, we're still kinda just moving forward and everything seems to be going fine, but I did talk to Pete and my dad today to make sure. The big trucks have had to move in and get all that rock in, it's tore up, it's winter time, so it's tore up some of the roads, but I don't plan on leaving them that way, so probably next week, we'll pour our concrete this weekend or first part of next week. Me and Pete just talked and he'll donate his time, we'll donate the gravel and we'll spread the three quarter minus up and down. Well, mostly it's Howard Street over by Elaine's house, cause they were going down that, it's just so steep. So we had them back up and going.
Yeah, we heard about that.
Kirby, I called her and talked to her today, she's not mad at me anymore, she still loves me, she said, that's good, cause I thought she was gonna shoot me, but. But, so we'll, we'll fix all that up so she doesn't have to and then there'll be enough, we'll do down Kirby as well, right there, cause we'll still have those, but I wanted to wait until next week till we're done with those big trucks, cause I can clean it all up and they're gonna drive through it once, it's gonna look the same. We do have the culverts in on the others now, so that should keep any more and we'll clean up, honestly, some of it may be, the rest of the cleanup will be in spring for Pine, because it's, no matter what we do, it's gonna be a mess during the winter. All that rock should keep it from further erosion, but when we throw along the three quarter minus on the top of Kirby, we'll throw some extra right down there on Pine in front of that, so everything's all pretty, cause it'll work, so.
It would help if we had a good hard freeze.
Yeah, I would, I would, if it would just quit raining or freeze, I really don't care which, but I've been in mud up to my knees for like two weeks, I'm sick of it. So, um, but past that, yeah, I think everything else is, is going great. Is there any questions or concerns you guys have with the bill, if not, I'll run out of here.
Just a curiosity thing, does that, does that one culvert go both of the approaches there?
Hey, there's two culverts, yes.
Two culverts, okay.
It was expensive, they're $500, yeah, and I had to get three of them for up and three of them for down plus the little butler, so it was very expensive. But the only reason we had the two approaches is because in the winter time, I remember Kirby, I was sliding all the way down to try and get into my driveway and Elaine's street is steeper. And then when we talked to the fire department, they said they wanted two, according to Chief and Pete, just because of the nature of that, to be able to turn around with a fire truck. And so I would have rather have just done one, cause it costs us probably an extra eight, $10,000 to do the other one or more, just in rock. But it'll all be, it's all pit run, we'll have another five or six giant loads over there, so it'll be graded out nice, the other one's nice. Honestly, those roads are holding up better than the other ones we got right now, so if I'm, we're putting 40,000 pound dump trucks up and down it right now and those ones are holding up fine, so I think we'll be alright, but I just wanna make sure, we'll be good neighbors and we'll keep our mess, I promise.
I, and I, I had let your dad know, George know, that we will let him know if there's any, anything comes up, we'll contact you guys.
Okay. But yeah, I already, I already talked to Elaine, cause I knew she'd be hot about it, we went, we went over and said, we'll clean it up, she's like, well, Michael, let me just, let me just, just give me a week Elaine, I'll promise we'll clean up all our mess, I just wanna finish making the mess before I clean it all up at once.
Are they rerouting now or still?
Yeah, we're gonna have them go down Kirby, they have a hard time making that corner with a bigger truck anyway, but I can't promise that the cement driver's gonna listen to me, so I'll try and get them to back up and go down Kirby, but Elaine might throw things at them, so.
How can they even get around that? That's, that's a steep, uh, going up, cause we were just in a minivan and got stuck up there.
Oh, on the lanes?
Yeah.
Yeah, it is steep and, and the problem is, it's just three quarter minus and you have a heavy truck, it just disappears, it pushes it down. And so with building this road, part of the reason why we're able to, we still put pit run and everything else, but before you put that, that cloth, that was what Mark Fowler, um, he's built a bunch of roads, he says you put that down first, you don't lose all the rock and the clay, it'll still pack down, it still does everything else, but then you don't have the clay growing up through all your rock later on. It's pretty expensive, but we put that down all over, another thousand dollars of stupid fabric, but.
It, it's well worth it.
But we put that down all over and we'll build it all up, those roads up above, I'm sure are good, I ain't gonna put that down to the whole town, but we'll put the three quarter minus down on the other. I don't know, I mean, we're not, we don't have a grader, I don't have all that other stuff, he's just gonna spread it, go open his dump truck and slow it, and if there's a heap, I'll go with it, the boys rake it out and make it nice, but that way at least we have a solid level of gravel, when they drive on it, it's not gonna be all mud. And we'll go from there, it's gonna be a rodeo in the winter like always, but we have been really blessed, it hasn't been a bad winter at all.
Yeah, for snow. Been nice.
Other than lots of water.
Yes, a lot of water. I don't think the ground can.
About 4,000 gallons of water out of that foundation now. Now it's filled and packed, so I don't have to deal with that and I'll have stupid concrete on it soon.
You could have pumped it into the pool and you'd have.
I know, I'd have a really muddy pool.
Where'd you end up getting the culvert from?
I bought it from a guy up in Cami actually, it was the cheapest and it was metal and I think it were 450 is what he charged me and then it was another 50 for the butler, which is about $200 cheaper than anybody else for the metal. The metal seems to be a little stronger, honestly, I went there, cause I couldn't get it anywhere else, nobody else had it. And I just went by what city, what the county said and I measured all the culverts around, they were all 12 inch, so I just went 12 inch.
Yeah, that's correct.
So it would have been cheaper to go smaller, but I'm like, everyone's 12, I wanna go enough that it's gonna work.
Yeah.
We bug, we dug out a big hole in front of them, I'll put some rocks around it eventually, but dug out a big hole so it should, water going through it shouldn't. And we, we buried them in three quarter minus and then at the end, there's a bunch of big rocks around it, so I'm trying to keep people from falling in a hole. But I think, I think we should be good and we'll, we'll dress up whatever we need to, but it seemed like that ditch is running better than it was before, so I think we're good now.
Yeah, it looks good to me, so.
But we will clean up our mess, I promise.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Once a quick. But anyways, if there's anything else, if not, I'll get out of here.
Thanks, John. No, we'll just, we'll just, uh, move this forward, we'll take it off the agenda and until probably spring.
Yeah, as far as the road building, we just went with the base and what the county told us to do and kinda went up from that. If we wanna go up past Kirby, that's a whole, a lot more machinery than I have to do it with right now, I'd like to go up to May, there, I don't know how you'd make it up there, I just don't see it.
I would look at that, possibly.
You need to come down from May and then drop a couple, but you dropped 30 feet, now it's 40 feet.
Probably you end up being a dead end street, cause I imagine Speedy's gonna sell that lots of buggy.
He's trying, but nobody would buy it, cause then, so Speedy's happy because we built that road up, I didn't take two feet out of that one bottom to make the corner, but now he has that other one, he could, someone could buy it now and build it.
Yeah.
Whereas before, so. Past that, there's only one other question, I guess, and I'm not worried about it till spring, but when we run water, um, I want it, I guess it would be on the furthest north side of that lot, it'll go straight down, it'll be out of the way of the septic and everything else that way, I don't have to worry about. And it's just be a water meter, it's just gonna be right off of Pine, it's, I'm talking to Pete and everybody, I think that's the easiest place for it, which would be right off of Pine and it'd just be on that property line, it should be on our property, but just down, or actually be on probably the easement, but just right down there.
Mike, I guess my concern was that if somebody builds a lot above you or there are lots in there, you know, how do we get water up to them if we had to come up from Pine anyway to?
Yeah, I don't, honestly, if anyone built above me, I think we'd have to come down off the, we're actually pulling power off the top, I think, I, I talked to, what's his name?
Joey.
Joey Vaughn, thank you, I knew it was Joey something, but I talked to Joey Vaughn and he said that's fine, we'd be able to pull power off that other pole down, which will save us about $20,000, about $10,000. But, so we'll pull that down, it's still gonna cost us 10, but, and then, yeah, so anyways, they'd have to come in down the top, I don't know how else you'd build it, it's just straight up.
Yeah, and that's the problem, that main stops down our corner Lulu anyway and we'd have to bring another six inch line down that road to the top of the.
So I have some, I'm sorry this is taking so long, but I have a, a question of expertise from you real quick, where that comes up, you've seen it where it kinda goes out and around. If we're not gonna be able to build up past that, I didn't dig any further down, cause I thought if they wanted to, I didn't wanna mess that up, but if, if you're okay with that, I have a machine now, I can make that flat and it makes it a lot easier for anyone to turn around right there, cause it goes like this right at the end.
On, on the road up that we're in, you're talking about, oh, okay.
If you have time, maybe come up and look at it with me tomorrow, I wanna get your expertise and your, cause I have a machine this week, I can, I can move it right now, it'd take me an hour to move it and I can do it, but I don't wanna move it if it's gonna mess anything else up for you, so I haven't done it yet.
I'm just thinking that future development with Speedy up there and stuff, we, the drive up there to those properties and stuff, you know, um, for the, for the city to take over that as a street, you know, usually it's a fully done developed.
Okay, so I'll just leave where it's at, they can put it out, but they need to.
We worry about it later and then if it comes down to us maintaining, then, then we'd have to discuss whatever.
Yeah, that was the only reason, I thought it would be easier to turn snow truck around, but that's fine.
Yeah.
Anyway, sorry, I took too much of your time, no problem.
Okay.
You guys have a good night.
You as well.
Okay, um, moving on. We will. Do we have any proposed amendments to the agenda? No? Uh, approval of the minutes.
Uh, I did not find any problems with the minutes, uh, is there anybody else?
I did not.
I'm gonna do, uh, minutes, we, uh, we're talking about the minutes of December, right?
Right, December's.
That they be approved as presented.
Phil second, Beth. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No opposed?
I'll hand in the minutes in the work session. Oh, you want the minutes in the work session too? Okay, and I do not find any problem with those either.
Okay, so you may.
So I'll, I'll move that those be accepted.
Okay.
I'll second.
All in favor? No opposed? Alrighty, financial report next.
Yeah, sorry, can you give me the, an extra?
He added a little bit of order here then, so we did December, then we got old.
Uh, he, he just chose to speak as a guest.
Oh, okay, okay.
Gotcha.
Oh, there it is.
And then we'll vote on what to do with that. Cindy? Did you wanna kind of? No, Rob's got mine.
No, I've already done the shootout over it, so no, I don't really want to. Alright, considering this is your first one, it's a work in progress.
Is this out of QuickBooks?
Yes. Well, part of it is.
Your. We just, we mostly have that up to date, we're just working on a couple more things.
Yeah, all of my questions are purely educational, cause I have not had anything to do with the, what you guys worked on to fix and repair and.
Yeah, we're almost there.
Okay, so this should actually say December 31st of 2024 at the top instead of January 7th. You'll see the bills on the next part, so. That's the expenses that were outstanding as of December 31st. Then below it for bank balances, those are from LGIP and they had not dropped their, um, December statements until today, so that did not make it on this report, so this is November 30th and those are the balances. And then this is P1 FCU, those are the balances in those accounts as of December 31st. And the grand total and the adjusted total for the expenses above. And then you have your citizen build water as of 12/24. Sanitation build, the city amounts build and the total. So it'll end up being tweaked next month, this was just a first attempt, so. It'll get better as it goes, but this, like I said.
So my suggestion was, like Cindy pull up other treasury reports from other cities and kinda like adjust it towards like they do. And that's not a year to year either, that's just basics of, which is something that we need to have.
Month to month.
Yeah, what John's talking about, that's budgetary stuff, that year to year, month to month, and you could have it requested.
Yeah, but it is also gives you a snapshot of time.
It could do, of course it does, but month to month, like we're gonna put November here and December, that's not gonna work, because you're always gonna spend more, a year end is when I, the only time, as an accountant, the only time I've ever seen that month over month over month. That, because it's hard, now balance sheet is a different story, but this month to month, you're talking about profit loss.
Yeah, but, okay, you know, either way, it's nice to know whether we're gaining on our finances or losing on our finances.
That's where, and that's where your budgets come in though.
Yeah, yeah, but also the budget is forecasting the future, I'm looking back in the past.
And, yeah.
I mean, I can see how more numbers would be handy, that's just my opinion, I don't know how hard that is, so I say that, I say that.
We spent money on the air conditioning, we spent money on the, um, magnesium chloride, that'll did it up.
Yeah.
All well worthwhile.
Right.
We can look at how much money we have in the bank compared to the same time last year, we shouldn't have the same ordinary bills.
Right.
And then, but if the bank account balances drop more than our extraordinary expenses, we have something else to figure out and look at. That's what I'm, that's what I'm saying.
I, I agree.
Now that, that I get.
Yeah, that's what, that's where I was going.
Okay, so then, then that's, I did not know that, so I do apologize, I do want to get that.
It just helps you know if you're going in the right direction, I mean, my homeowner association, I was president of, we were spending more money every month than amortized over the whole year, we were coming in.
Yeah, well, I mean, we did trend analysis on supply chain items in the military to know and forecast.
Forecasting.
Whether you're living in your budget or not.
Right, I mean, it was, it, it is tied to money that, you know, but I mean, I, I just know that if I had 60 lanterns for whatever type bomb this year and I've got 25 right now and the training plan hasn't changed, it's all the variables, I mean, I like lots of numbers also, because you can, you know, identify something and maybe make a better decision.
Right, yes.
I just, I just didn't know if that was something easy that Excel could do.
It's easy for QuickBooks to do.
Do you know our QuickBooks?
By the same, by the same token, we've. Filled out our supply list for the water, stuff like that, I believe, you know, we bought stuff that hadn't been properly ordered, so it's in, in, in stock, you know, whereas before it was kind of after something broke, we bought it, we didn't have it.
So you're talking, we've got a little bit of inventory.
That's what I'm getting at, and that's something that they didn't used to do, so that would cause.
Trying to be more modern, proactive in general and less reactionary.
Right.
Yes.
Yeah.
Cause I know we were talking chlorine last time, I didn't make last meeting, but the meeting before that, I think we were talking about ordering a bunch of chlorine and to me, if there's no leaks in the water system. And, uh, you know, everything's working back within norms, then we should relatively believe that we would have a budget for a certain amount of chlorine, barring any kind of catastrophe.
So I can work with Cindy on doing this, a couple of different kinds of reports, break into the next meeting, show you guys, see what.
I'd also like to, I'd also like to know labor reports, you know, how much did we spend on labor for the maintenance worker last, a year before versus during the same period of time, year by year? Are we spending more on maintenance, are we spending less than maintenance for labor, are we spending more on water department labor or less on water department, are we paying more clerical or are we paying? On water department labor or less on water department labor, are we paying more clerical or are we paying less clerical?
And this is one of the.
Get paid less.
But you may, but you may be working more hours, I don't know.
This is one of those things that gets better the more information we put in the system and they do it, so it's good to talk about it. I agree with labor, I agree.
See, and the thing about it, like on, on your balance sheet, you can, you can separate your maintenance. So all this.
I just, I also know that some of these databases to make some of these numbers come together can also kind of be a pain in the ass, so it's probably gonna be something.
I, I actually think it's, well, the only be, well, I've been working on QuickBooks since it came out. So for me, it's like easy.
Right.
Simple.
Yeah, it'd take me a month, at least.
So, you know, Cindy, they, she's done really well, you know, there's a couple of the, the bank reconciliations that I'm helping her with.
Yep.
We got all those taxes done. Uh, the, the accounts, uh, receivables needs to be balanced, and that's pretty much. Then we'll, we'll be able to print some good reports for you guys.
It, it's not that it's, it's been a lackadaisical thing, we've had, you know, like. Soon as we get the five years of taxes, back taxes taken care of, we get slammed with state saying, oh, here's two, what, two, three years?
Yeah, three years.
Three years of state taxes that wasn't dealt with appropriately.
And, and that's gonna keep happening, I have a feeling.
It's. It's.
Is it like problems in recording or numbers?
That's not filing. It's not doing good.
And so, it's like, you know, we were five years behind in all.
You get started on one thing and you're almost there, and then you gotta stop and go back and do this, and so it's not a fast process.
Yeah, no good.
I wish it was a fast process.
No, no good deed goes unpunished, so.
And it, but, with all due respect, if it had been done correctly. Each year prior, we wouldn't have to be going back hunting for things. For paperwork that.
Well, see, and that's another thing, QuickBooks that we have right now only goes back to two thousand and twenty, a couple of months of two thousand and nineteen. So we can't even do it, well, five year we could now, I guess. And I even tried to on a different computer restore the backup to the. Nine, two thousand and nineteen we found, and it will. So, there's gonna be a lot of things that we're gonna have to, we may have to dig a box of this bit.
Right.
It's fitting there, you know, it's not an easy thing to learn, it is a difficult thing to learn.
Did they contact us and tell us that we were back on taxes this year after we filed or we kicked this off?
Before, before tax, before we did the taxes, right?
We got contacted, yeah, we just got a letter, Cindy gave a charge.
Federal and state?
It was separate times, it was in, what, July, we got the ones for five years of federal, and then in October. No, we didn't get the, we got the October federal and October.
They paid, they, they paid the taxes, they just didn't file the return.
And actually, QuickBooks paid the taxes, because they were paying pretty.
Until it stopped being accepted, the money stopped being accepted because the paperwork wasn't there, so.
So they haven't accepted, yeah.
Right, so we do have back taxes that are gonna need to be paid. Because now the paperwork is in, so now they can reconcile the paperwork with the monies they've received, and now we'll have to pay more money.
Yeah, we now simply have.
Taking our money that we.
You basically had a thirty thousand dollar credit with the IRS that they didn't know what to do with. Cause they had no paperwork to go along with the money.
I think they should just give it.
Give it back, right.
Give it back, yeah. Trust me, this is the first time we've ever worked that and helped with anything that ever had a credit with the IRS.
Yeah, they definitely.
Yeah.
For the interest.
So with the idea of the next month, we'll have a couple of different. Financial reports to look at and see which way we want them done with the information that's on them. Are we okay with what we see right now?
Yeah. Yeah.
So basically, we've been talking about these two states, these two reports.
This, this one, this is bills to be paid.
Oh, okay, okay. I mean, we have money in bank, but we don't know if it's a good amount of money or not, it's worth getting at.
Yep, no, I got you.
Well, they've got more in there than when I started in March, a lot more.
Right, yeah, well, again, you, right. I mean, going forward now, we're gonna have a better idea if we're misspending, overspending, or underspending.
Uh, yeah, exactly.
And anything we look at in the past is kind of garbage in, garbage out, because the numbers weren't real.
From January up to now, they will be.
Right, but I'm saying.
December seventeen.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
December of two twenty three back. What's in the book doesn't mean anything.
And that's not something that you wanna change.
No, because you're.
No.
And everything else.
Well, it's not only that, I, you know, you wouldn't wanna be.
That's not ours to change.
Don't open that door to worms.
That's not ours to change, we didn't, we didn't do that.
So basically, January on, I, you know, as far as the AR, I did change a few things there, but. But just it, so from January up to current.
Thanks for working on all that.
Yeah.
That's great.
Yeah.
Yeah, without Tammy coming and.
Oh, no, I'm well aware.
Every day, longer hours than me, yeah.
The labor boss would be.
Cindy's doing a good job getting it though.
Like crazy.
She's doing a good job getting it.
Okay, can I get a motion to pass the financial report, to approve it?
I'll make it accepted, yeah.
Okay, and accepted it. Okay, Milk made a motion, John seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
No opposed? Financial report approved. Okay, bills to be paid. Zipley Fiber, we haven't received bills from, right?
Right, Zipley, uh, had a glitch in their billing system, we didn't get bills for two months. I didn't realize it until I was putting this. Report together, and I called them on Monday, and. They sent me the bills, so that's why Zipley is higher, because it's two months.
Guess I should check it out.
Yours is coming out automatically, isn't it?
Yeah, should be.
Mine came out last month.
Yeah.
And, uh. Take note of that hundred and thirty dollars for Anatech Labs. Because that might be the lowest you see it for the rest of this year, right? Cause we have all these new, uh.
Yeah.
Lead and copper tests that we have to do, and.
I've got news about that, and it's very good news, so.
We'll, we'll be waiting for that.
Yeah. I think they hit on some of that during my training, that I would hope that, oh, we'll see when it gets to you.
Alright, so. Who wants to make a motion to approve the bills to be passed, to be paid on?
I'll make a motion to approve the bills to be paid.
All approved?
Yep.
Aye. No opposed? Bill to be paid passed. Okay, moving on to old business, the Simper Construction on extending Kirby Street off of Pine. I made a suggestion that, uh. Since everything's going well and really nothing can be.
Yeah, those culverts, he's not, he cleaned it up a lot, I mean, there's potholes all over Pine anyway.
Right.
Uh, but I mean, I'm not necessarily getting stuck going up and down, the culverts that they put in in the grading that Pete did today as they fixed up some of those roads. It made it a lot nicer, I mean, it's still a muddy mess out there, but all the roads are like that, so. And I agree with what he was saying about not fixing it until he's done getting all the big trucks up and down, so unless.
Right.
Unless one of those trucks does so much damage where it becomes impassable, which so far, again, they haven't done it. Um, I think it looks good.
Okay, do you wanna make a motion to put this off till spring?
Yeah, I'd make a motion, where was this at, under a wooden mess? Uh, so I make a motion that we move the Simper Construction project extending Kirby and just the overall condition of the roads around the construction site off until spring.
How second? So are we tabling this?
Tabling it until spring and then.
We gotta probably put a month, a month to re, bring it up.
Go up, right.
I mean, April, May, what?
April.
April. So you made the mo- Rob made the motion, John seconded it. All in favor?
Aye, aye. Yeah, cause if we do it in April, then by May, usually it sometimes starts drying out, so.
So fix it in April, or bring it back.
Bring it up, right, well, and maybe we can have some discussion about our own roads and.
Right.
Greater projects or whatever is going on here.
Alrighty. Did you get that, Cindy, all right? Uh, moving on to Microsoft three sixty account. Uh, for better departmental communications and access between city departments. Anthony?
What, uh?
Can you explain?
It's basically, so the, the reason I brought it up was working at the water plant, the laptops that we have there, one is ancient, it's on Windows seven. Works for what we're doing, but there's like zero security with it. Um, and then the other laptop is newer. Everything is set up there, like, but on that same front, like, we have a flash drive and a hard drive that everything's being backed up to, and it's all on his logins. So, not saying anybody's malicious or whatever, but like, I have access to anything he does on Gmail. And anything on his Google Drive is accessible through our water laptop. Um, and then it's like.
Personal, you mean?
Yes, it's his personal accounts we're using. Um, and it was just, since we're trying to get a more professional or organized situation there. Three six five, it's free, I already created the account for the city with a Gmail backup. That's recoverable, so we never lose the account or access, which was what I was running into when I looked into the old account. Cause it was set up by the prior administration, they had the access and all of that. So it's like I can't kick them out. And then whoever is adminning it also has access to it, so we can't get rid of them, so it's like. People that aren't involved anymore would still have access to our city accounts. So the accounts were free, but then it was like, I don't like sending official anything through my Gmail account. Um, and again, nothing malicious or whatever, but if it's ever subpoenaed, or they pull it, they take your whole account.
Yeah.
Um, whereas with the three six five, you can get an official Outlook account, Anthony Gravenmire at CityPEC, whatever. And then I can communicate through email, it's all official, and, you know, whoever else is on that or whatever.
But if you, if you access it through your own personal device, you're in the same situation.
That's incorrect.
That's true.
That is incorrect.
No.
They cannot take your personal device without a court order.
Well, they can't take anything without a court.
If they're subpoenaing information from the account, they could just take the account.
Well, the State Department told, told me differently.
Okay. Um.
I mean, why don't each computer at the, um, the different computers have a. CityPEC Water One or CityPEC Water Two at Gmail? I mean, that's just easy.
It's the, that's the same conversation though.
Computer at the water plant should have its own Gmail address.
Should it?
Yeah.
It, well, as we're finding, what should be and what was is two different things.
Yeah, right, and the, I looked at both Google and three six five, they basically do the same thing with. Spreadsheets and all of that. It was more looking at, again, Outlook gives you the, the emails with the Gmail as well, you can have a backup account, is why I was looking at it that way.
You, now it doesn't matter, you can have Mike, you can have Outlook and not have Microsoft three sixty five.
Correct.
They have nothing to do with each other.
But I was looking at having the Excel, the Word, and then the online storage, so we can start moving some of the. Documents to cloud based, so that you can access them. Without it just being the little hard drive up there, the flash drive up there, so it's like if anything changes or something with our water meters. We gotta go to the site physically as opposed to, let me log in here, I can bring it up, or it's down at City Hall or whatever.
You can use Microsoft Cloud.
I'd use Teams, Microsoft Teams.
Yeah.
Which is through three six five, unless you buy the individual software.
Wait till we got done with it, but I, Microsoft Teams is awesome.
And that was, you get a lot more, I guess, with a subscription.
I'd have to show you, I'd have to sit down and do a working group and look at it, but.
Three six five, that Teams comes with that.
Pay something for.
Probably, yeah.
Cause I, I looked it up, and it, it does have a subscription, it, it is a subscription base, but. For instance, like, we're having a problem right now with Cindy's computer. Um, right now, we're backing it up to Microsoft Cloud.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, the free backup is only five gigabytes, and she's at four point eight.
Right, yeah.
Depending on.
I surpassed it today.
I told it was gonna be within a week.
Yeah.
And, you know, and because of the way we're organizing things on that computer. Um. It's hard, it's hard to put things out, either way, for two dollars a month, you can go from five gigabytes free storage to a hundred gigabytes of free storage.
Right, yeah, yeah, I know.
You know, so, you know.
I wonder if we should.
And, and, and that's all, you know, that's completely on Mac, right, and everything automatically is off, is located on both machines, per physical device. And in the cloud automatically, all the time, it's always backed up, always.
Yep.
But with that, just adding that memory, we won't be able to, like Cindy won't be able to access the. Water plant's files to go in and get her numbers for the water, uh, water bills.
It would be the same, it would be the same thing of what he's just talking about, is. Putting it in a central location, so if we put city documents on there, they're accessible from any machine with your Microsoft login. So you can log in on any device and access the cloud through there. Or if you have the account, you can, we would have the city Teams thing, and we can do remotes if, if you're sick or you're out of country or whatever.
You've also got a problem in that two different people, multiple people have accessed the same file, one person changes it, doesn't know that it's been changed, now you end up with conflicts.
We'd have to create some sort of little IT policy, probably.
Yeah, which wouldn't be followed.
Well, you can lock documents, so. You can do, you can do read only.
You can make it read only, yes.
And you can record edits too. And I'm not saying it's not without flaws, it's just in, and trying to organize and get kind of a centralized location. That was kind of the, the cheapest way to do it. Again, cause extra storage is only a few bucks a month, depending on how much crap we wanna put on there, but.
I can see where, any document generated by the water department should be visible. To Cindy and Cheryl, right?
Yeah.
Whereas the documents on Cindy's computer should not be visible to you guys.
Right, and you can still do that though, in there, you can lock certain files.
In Teams, you could go ahead and create tabs, and then anything she needed that they regularly update.
Yeah, but the problem with that is that.
Date them and throw them in.
When you start having to do things to things for floodites in America, things don't get done properly and think, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, I got you.
It's, it's, you can make a policy, but if you don't rigorously follow the policy, it can make things, I'm talking real world, not.
But if somebody, okay, so. Say like, like QuickBooks, everybody has their own login, if there's something in there that's wrong. Cindy or I could go in there and see who did it. You know what I'm saying? Isn't, is that.
They have timestamps whenever you open documents, who opened it last and when.
So if she opened it, would it have her initials somewhere where you can see it, or just a time, date stamp?
It would either timestamp with her login or the computer that it was logged in on.
I mean, first, Cindy and Cheryl and you shouldn't be altering any water department files. I mean, there's no reason to.
Right.
Right, and it's not like, it, it's not like most of the information, and I'm not necessarily talking critical stuff, cause that. You could leave on a computer or an encrypted drive, this is more of like the stuff that would be easier to disseminate amongst everybody. On our own time, or we can add to it in that central, and not just be in one location, cause like I said, if something happens at the plant. Or, you know, a power surge, or a flood, or some stupid happens, all that information's gone. Um, same with the computer down there, anything happens to that computer. We're digging in the filing cabinet for the next best thing. Um, you know, I just, I know technology's good until it's not, but. In what we're trying to do, it would clean up a lot of things that way, I feel anyway.
I mean. The water department being that way, you know, I don't know that Cindy would go and go. Being that way, you know, I don't know that Cindy would go and go to the Microsoft Cloud and look up the, um, water book. File, whereas I think she would rather probably have used email to her, just for ease of access. Um, but yeah, no, all that stuff should be back, backed up to not just. Because people forget to back things up. If they happen to manually do it. It's inevitable.
But like when, if Anthony's sick and he's got the meter readings for the month, he has to, now he would have to. Be sick, go up to the plant. And either print them off or email them to Cindy, where if it was on this and he was sick, Cindy could go in. Get the meter readings and do the water bills, without him having to go physically go up to the plant, pull up that program. And put it into an email and email it, or print it off and bring it down, where right now, that's how it has to be done.
Well, like, real word, real world example, I was talking to DEQ about our lead and copper stuff. Um, I didn't have the file on this computer, and it wasn't on the other computer. Uh, I believe it was someone else's, so I had to figure out whose computer is this on, get ahold of them. They had to get back, send it to the computer, and like she was saying, then when I got off Morfino, I had to drive up there. Put in hours up there, trying to figure everything out where is, if we could just access it through everything else, I could have gotten it done in five minutes. But now we've gone, that took two days to figure out and do.
So can I go back to the beginning for a second of what you were talking about? I'm curious about, so you've got two laptops up there.
Hmm.
And one is seven, the other one, but they are accessible by other people still, is that what you're, our Microsoft three six?
The old three six five account is accessible by the old administration still.
Uh, no. We changed our Microsoft password.
Up there too?
Not up there, no, I'm, we, we changed our Mi, well.
If you cha, how did you know what it was though?
Well, they have the old passwords in a file. I went and when I installed this computer here, I changed the Microsoft password. Okay, so. City of, whatever the hell the login is for City APEC at Microsoft, okay, they don't have that. Apparently. That computer has its own Microsoft, each of the computers has their own Microsoft account, which I think they have to anyway. You know, they're not, if you would have changed the password for the Microsoft account, they wouldn't have access to it anymore, I mean, that's an easy thing to do.
But he's saying that they can't change the administrator on it because it's just like the text messaging thing. Whenever I try to get into something.
Whoever originally set the account up as an admin has access to it and I can't change that.
Yeah. Mine has.
It's like through, it's like through GoDaddy and.
Not that problem, I, I changed Microsoft, I can't remember how I did it, I figured out how to do it.
One, like, I was, I, when I tried to figure out the email and to reset the password for this, the QRO Idaho, uh.
Email.
Email. There, I was talking to the guy trying to figure it out, and once he realized what I actually had, he just went, okay, hold on. We have one guy here, and there's a server in the back of the room that all those accounts are running on. And if either one of those go out, your whole email's gone. So updating to this Microsoft, we can migrate everything over. And we have new stuff, not some dusty server that one person knows.
So.
You did one prob, well, for the water department is one thing, but, you know, for the city. We're locked into to some extent the QRO Idaho account because changing that is a lot of work, I mean, a lot of work. So. But that doesn't change anything, I, I don't know how difficult it would be to get a new email address. For the water department, I don't think you guys have that many subscription based things that are linked to your email.
Got a couple.
You see what I'm saying?
Yeah, when the gentleman that I talked to with that, cuz I told him the city and the water department have that QRO. He said whenever we do go to change and update our email, give him a call, he will help us migrate everything. So.
Yeah. Sometimes you don't know who's gonna be emailing you at your old email address. That's the problem.
Yeah, and we can try forwarding stuff for a while too.
What's, what is that QRO Idaho attached to? Is that like ZipWee or?
Uh, Air, Air.
QRO web internet.
Airbridge.
Which, Airbridge bought out QRO.
And it's free to us.
Yeah, I don't know why we would wanna give that up though.
No, we don't want to.
These are kinda two separate things, you guys are mixing the city computer system up with.
Yeah, no, we're talking, we're talking, we're talking water plant up there.
Trying to gain continuity.
Completely different things than that, down here.
They could go ahead and set up Microsoft Teams on both of those computers, uh.
Yeah.
And then give her login information.
Right.
And create a little folder so she could go ahead and look at it and just have to log into the computer over here to do it, so.
Yeah, I don't need to change anything that they do.
Right, yeah, I know, yeah, and I know, I, I know that too, he's right, you could, he, they could lock the files also, so. Uh, it, Teams in general works really good as a continuity book. It's really good, you can drag and drop files in there.
I was gonna say, what is it, is it like Dropbox?
Uh, no, it's, it's more, it's like, uh. Trying to think, what, what is, what do we call, it's like, uh, it's like database program. It's a mixture of Dropbox and like, it's like a collaborative.
It allows, it allows a team.
Software, yeah.
To look at each other's work.
Yeah.
And it also lets you have face to face conversations on the computer.
You could, yeah, you can, you can have Teams, meetings, yeah, you can do all kinds of stuff, there's a lot, it's, it's Zoom.
Zoom.
Oh, so like, I'm gonna be gone the month of February, but I need to be on that.
Yeah, yeah, so not only can you be, you can, we used to call it BTC.
I know, we will, I said.
Not, not only could you be in the meeting, like if we had strong enough signal down here. You would also have access to any of the documents that we dropped into the, into the tab for.
Ah.
You know what I mean, so like everything would be there for.
I like that.
And, and it's cool if you're working on like a big, something like a big policy, like a PDF or anything through Adobe and you're making changes and stuff. Cuz you can, I mean, you can really get in the weeds on who makes updates and like, I mean, we, we use it a lot during. Yeah, it's, but it's a lot, so, uh, it sounds like we need a new laptop for the water plant.
Well, we, we have the new one and then there's kinda just a backup one.
Is that the one that's seven?
Yeah, the backup. Re-formatted or anything like that or?
Not, not seven, seven's dead.
Right, yeah.
You can't upgrade it.
Right.
They're not even worth it.
But realistically.
Yeah.
It'll connect and, we've just kinda been using it to store documents.
I mean, you, for, for that, I mean, I'd do Chromebook or a Surface would probably be sufficient if you're talking to everything on the cloud anyway.
Yeah, if, if that's something we'd like to do is upgrade that computer.
And if you wanted to back up to a hard drive, cuz obviously Chromebooks have no space on themselves.
Yeah, I have one, I used to burn about fifteen minutes and I couldn't catch it, I didn't know what I was getting when I got it. Well, I like that Team Media thing.
Do you, do we have internet up at the plant?
Oh, yeah.
Cuz you get notifications through the.
Yeah. Uh, so.
What kind?
It's, for all the app bases, it's. Seventy two dollars a year per account or seven twenty a month per account. And you get all the Microsoft suite with Teams.
Right.
And your own Outlook account, which, again, you could tie it to the city account as the admin account.
Seventy two dollars a year or seven twenty a month?
Yeah.
It would be cheaper to go seven, seventy two a year.
Can you start using the free version right now?
I think they give you a trial, but I, I think they're gonna wanna carve or something at some point, I can look into it.
I didn't know if we could go ahead and table this as an action item and call this next month a beta test or something.
Yeah, cuz like I said, the account's set up, so I can start a free trial and let it run and.
How long is the free trial?
Either a week or a month, I'd have to double check. But again, it's not that expensive, we'll figure it out, see how it works.
Hmm, so.
Trying to think how to phrase this.
He's fixing like motion, he's just trying to.
I can see it in his face.
Sorry, I was just looking for a little bit of security, one, for how we're using the laptops.
Yeah.
And then some.
No, I, I agree.
Get substantial, just to save our blood.
Security questions on the plant itself with ASICs and everything, but.
Hmm.
Um.
Water call, you have call chat GPT?
Uh, yeah, right, that's gonna be on your phone soon.
Oh, would you?
Yep, uh.
Got my phone.
Yeah, I'm gonna upgrade.
Technologies gone way over my head.
I guess I would make a motion to press forward with using the trial version of Microsoft three sixty five. For water department usage. And then add in, I guess that's the motion. And then my action item would be for next city council meeting to review and potentially. Uh, sign up for a Microsoft three sixty account that we pay for, or pay a subscription fee.
I'll second that.
And then everybody should probably go look at Microsoft three sixty and Teams and everything and see what you think.
I just paid seventy dollars for it on my computer.
For an a, is it annually?
A year.
Can you use it on more than one computer if you're one license?
Per user.
So, yeah, so if you get, there is one where it gives you the app version, so it's like if you log into your Outlook account. And go to three six five's website, you can do the app version of it and have access to everything that way.
Yeah.
Otherwise, it, it gets more expensive if you get the installable side.
Ads on that little computer and pop up and it says Teams, check it out, I'm, I'm pretty sure that's what it is. Guys, I've, I've got a, a motion by Rob, I need someone to second it, I second it, so anyone thought. All in favor?
I'm staying on that, I missed a lot of conversation.
Okay.
I guess I'll be, I'll be proud of this, but.
Yeah, that's what I, that's, that's what I wanted to say, just to see.
I mean, obviously, we have to do things up there differently, different versions now.
Yeah.
Simple as that. Don't know, I mean, you can also go Google Sheets.
Right, okay.
Okay, so we had.
That is free.
I need to, I need to finish this, close this up, so we had a motion from Rob, second from Tammy, all in favor. No, abstain because he was not in the room.
So you have three eyes.
Three eyes and a.
Abstain.
And abstain. You got that? Okay. Moving on to payment to TD and H for the five hours of Rich Altman's work. Ultimately, uh.
What?
Yeah. Let me find that.
So this is different than yours to pay or?
Yes, this is, this is, uh, brought back from, you know.
No, I know what this is about.
Yeah.
Do you see the H?
That is the.
I've, I've got one.
Uh, okay, I know what you're talking about, I know what you're, I know what you're talking about, I remember coming up before.
I need this guy's job.
Ten, seventy two dollars an hour.
Me too.
Oh, yeah, that's good, Z or engineer?
No, no, he's not, he did things that we could have done ourselves, but we didn't know.
Well, I had started doing them.
And did he quote us a labor rate?
No.
No.
No, he did not.
And why didn't we ask?
We didn't know he was doing, we, all we did was call and ask if he could put us in contact with someone. That we could discuss the repairs of the Lulu Bridge, because it was in dire needed repairs. Next thing we know. He's calling us back with all this stuff.
Here's, here's the scope of work, here's where to buy the supplies and how much they're gonna be. And he went in nittles, I was already calling around for the supplies. We just needed to know if we would be in breach of contract by fixing it, that's all we asked him for, period.
We never actually told him to do the work.
No.
We don't pay him.
No, we asked if he, so, so that we wouldn't breach the contract that we have to get the new Lulu Bridge.
Well, here's the other question. How much were those repairs he just worth to us?
He didn't do any repairs.
He didn't do anything.
Yeah, that's, I was just consulting, yes.
Yeah, he didn't do anything.
No, I mean, if we pay him anything.
I don't know what the price was.
Nine eighteen fifty.
A hundred and sixty seven dollars an hour.
Nine eighteen fifty.
Nine eighty.
Five hours of work.
Nine hundred, almost a thousand dollars, nine hundred and fifteen dollars and fifty cents.
No.
And then it was a few months later when he said, oh, by the way, um, would, would you, this was out of my scope of work. Would you mind paying for this? Would you pay for this?
Would you pay my house?
Yes.
And, and so the company that he works for, what are they paying him hourly, I guarantee.
They won't tell us, they won't tell us.
I'm sure they will.
Do we need this guy in the future?
Yeah, he's on, he's on the, uh, engineering crew for the Lulu Bridge.
So, we could write a nasty letter to his boss saying that this person. Allegedly performed work for us without actually getting permission.
Yeah, I, I was under the impression that we only called him. To see, cuz we already had the materials, we were already look, I went out and measured everything.
Right, all we needed was.
We already knew what kind of bolts, we, you know, it wasn't anything cosmic. Didn't require any engineering, we're just using our materials to replace the old deck boards, I was only under the impression. That we called him just to make sure.
We weren't in breach of contract.
We weren't in breach of contract with the new construction somehow. Um.
And I worked for.
Now I'm wishing we wouldn't have called him at all and we would have just fixed it.
I did payroll for a steel company, I had five engineers, none of them not even close to a hundred and sixty seven.
Never, ever make that mistake again, I guess.
I mean, if we had to pay him anything, I would say you can look up the average rate for this type of an engineer.
He didn't do, he didn't engineer anything.
He didn't engineer.
He was literally looking around for lag.
He made a few phone calls.
He was doing the same thing I was doing at the same time.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not really on board with paying him, I would be on board with writing the letter or maybe following up to understand.
Yeah, mind you. With this whole ordeal, we get reimbursed for everything that was spent on that bridge.
Even for repairs?
Even for the repairs, that's what this whole thing was, we had, in order to be able to work on that. We had to sign a contract saying that we would not go over five thousand dollars in repairs on that bridge.
But this guy took advantage of that. But he didn't even tell us that we had to sign the agreement.
Yeah, he slipped this in.
He just, he just said, oh, here's your scope of work, yes, you can do it, and here's where to get the supplies.
City Council meeting to make his case in person.
They can do that for next month cuz he's in Lululeah.
In person.
Oh, yeah, that's a very good idea.
And see if it just, doesn't go away.
Yeah, yeah, I, I would, uh.
Write him a letter.
So what is it, decline to pay and inviting to the next city council meeting to make his case?
Yeah.
So do you, since this is an action item, do you make a motion on that?
I'll make a motion for decline to pay, write a letter, invite him to the next city council meeting to state his case.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
None oppose, motion passed.
Declined to pay because we did not have a clear. I don't know how to put, we didn't authorize or request.
I didn't even know we were paying him, I didn't, I had no idea we were paying him, obviously you guys made all the phone calls and I was just measuring stuff and trying to find bolts. You know, and, and then we went and did all the work.
For doing your civic duty and donating your time to City APEC.
I mean, I. I'll make sure.
What, what, what was he asking to be paid total, was it total?
Nine hundred and eighteen dollars, this is ten, a hundred and sixty seven dollars an hour.
Nine hundred.
We're in the wrong business.
And if we do end up paying, we definitely send him a ten ninety nine.
Yeah, well, and if we get money back for everything we did, we should probably add in the labor.
Oh, yeah, we have to.
Well, uh, city has to provide the labor for free.
Oh, that's right.
Okay.
We have to pay our own labor.
Nevermind.
But they pay for parts and consulting fees.
Yeah.
This is where he was going with the. This is where he was going with this.
Well, that's, I'm gonna re, I'm gonna revisit that contract. Because.
And if he comes in, he has to justify where, I mean, whenever I had a T and M, um. Purchase of change order, I had to justify the hell out of how I came up with my wage rate.
Every single minute of what you were doing.
And how you built the wage.
Yep.
You know, so much is wage, so much is payroll, so much is benefits, so much is just the transportation truck. I mean, all of that stuff's gotta go in there.
Okay, we are moving on to new business now. First one is past due water bills with large outstanding balances. There's, uh. There's a paper. Does he have this?
I think so.
Oh, Jesus.
Credit.
We're being recorded.
So. As you can see on there.
Now, a question I have about the sanitation, sanitation is still charging. It's not with our new sanitation person that wasn't the case. On, no, and the second one's from the top. It's saying that. They didn't want sanitation. Same as Nadel.
That's for the, that one's for the next, that's, that goes for the sanitation, that's the next topic. We've got two on there for.
Oh, we're only talking water.
Yeah, that, this one, this one, and this one. Is the past due bill. This is a snowbird thing.
Yeah, yeah, I know.
So with the. Past due water bills with large outstanding balances, um, we have one that.
I'm just curious.
No, well, the name, but.
Yeah, we know.
Yeah, so.
And we add in the collection that we should have gotten back, more.
Yeah, another almost eight. So this is, this is now ten, almost ten thousand. But it's been auctioned off, we don't get anything for that because.
You know, we, you know, we do, because if they didn't collect by a certain period of time or return it back to us. What contract says?
That was, that was before the, the county has, uh.
Tax things and there's numerous medical liens on that property and all that gets paid before.
And I talked to the attorney.
Anything and they said we would not see anything.
Are we talking about the first meter right now?
The first meter, yeah.
Thirty two?
Yes.
Um, and they're paying five.
No, we're talking sixty three.
No, yeah, you're right, you're right.
Sixty three, the third one down.
And they're paying what, five cents a month?
They were, yes.
They start?
Well.
I, I'm against my advice, stop billing them, cause as long as you're billing them, we can't, we can't collect. Go into collections or anything.
Yeah.
So. I, I personally, just overall, think that it, some things maybe need to change, like instead of ninety day notices. Sixty day notices. These, this one especially, the ones that are after ninety days, they need to come off of our AR. It's not collectible.
Right.
I personally also think after ninety days is, is a lien or a collection, because. I went to Alaska, I forgot to pay my utility bill, thirty days, it was off. I had to call my son and have him to go over there. So I think we're letting this.
Yeah, well, feed them.
Yeah, that's, it's most utilities are that.
So what happens if they just turn it back on?
Put a lock on.
Yeah, you put a lock on it so they can't turn it on.
You took the locks off, then the hucks get.
Only if we're shutting them off.
In the Lewiston orchards, my daughter, when they lived up there, had a water line break and it took Lewiston, the orchard's water plant. Three days to get up there to turn the water off. The water ran in the road for three days.
On which side of the meter?
On my son's side, my son-in-law's side of the meter, my daughter's. Yeah, so, but. That's the whole thing is, is.
So there's, there's two, there's two questions here. One, accounts receivable, what to do with it, right? Two, what to do about it. So what Tammy suggested is after ninety days, we decide it's non-collectible and we remove from our accounts receivable.
It still stays on the balance sheet.
It becomes an unlikely collectible debt.
Exactly. That, like, when we go to start getting grants, they're not gonna want that on our AR.
That's right.
So we just need to move that out.
Into an account that's not likely, I think it was, mine was not likely to be paid or something like that.
And I think anything over ninety days that's not paid in full. Needs either a lien or a collection. Agency.
I mean, collection, I think if you file collection, you can't file lien if you sold.
Well, that's why I said or.
The lien is a mechanic's lien. But then you have to perfect the lien.
Perfect it, meaning how?
Taken to court. You just filing a lien doesn't do you any good.
Oh, no, I know that.
The lien stays on when they try and sell the property, then they gotta satisfy the lien.
Yeah.
But if, if they don't sell it, we can't co, we can't, we can't make the, I, I want a lot of small claims court cases. And I've never collected a dime from, you know, one of them.
I've done a lot of things and I understand that. I also understand. The fact that they can't sell it until they pay in full.
That's right. So someday you're gonna get your money, I guess.
Yeah, right. And then you've got a collection agency and you have different, hang on a second, I'm, I'm talking. So when you get a collection agency, there's so many different options there. You can sell them the entire.
Get.
You know, you can give it to them and they get a percentage of it. So there's many different options. My biggest thing right now is, when do we do it?
Yeah.
And to choose which way we wanna do it.
I'm more, the lien is a one-page piece of paper.
Yes.
And it's very easy, you can have a pile of lien forms in your desk and just a matter of, uh. Filling it out, going in, getting it stamped, and it's, it's on their permanent property record. So eventually they're gonna, if, if they sell, if the person dies, whatever, you're gonna get the money at that point. Collection. You know, collections don't have any teeth.
No, they don't.
So.
And I think collections cost more.
They do.
Than putting a lien on the property.
So if we're gonna go the lien route. Would you also pull the meter at that point and then charge for the meter pull and. For whenever it gets reinstalled?
Yeah. And you're getting paid for those days because it's developed property. But you're not using water. If you, if somebody comes in and says, I wanna shut my water off to, like, Penny selling a lot down here. I wanna have that shut off, I don't wanna be charged for the water or sanitation, a meter or sanitation. Can you shut that off or do you still have to pay?
All, the ordinance says any developed property must have a meter.
Okay.
And sanitation.
So then.
Yeah, that's the answer.
And sanitation. So then you can't pull the meter on, on the property.
But you can lock it out. I think locking it out is.
It's standard, yeah.
Is equal. I mean, pulling it is, is punitive.
Right.
And it doesn't come back on until it's paid, regardless, they sell the property, it still has to be paid.
Every month, I would say every month during meter reading, you take and make sure that lock is still there.
The meter still gets looked at.
Are there? Yeah, in case there's a leak or anything else.
Are there properties in fact that are, the water is, and everything's turned off, but they're not being charged then?
No, a few though. There are, there are people who have had meters.
There's not over by, uh, Greens, that property there next to.
They had that removed by city council ordinance, or not ordinance, but by a motion of, the city council approved it.
Oh, I see. If they're not being charged, they're developed fee though.
And.
No, cause there's nothing there.
There's a house there.
Next to John Klein?
Yeah.
Oh, where John Moxley used to live.
Yeah, that was prior administration that I don't, that was not, not the ordinance.
I personally don't think that should have been approved because.
Yeah.
We had an ordinance that says it can't be done.
That, that year there was three meters removed that way.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm actually, I'm sorry, I'm speaking for Penny Dale, where she would be here and stuff, because she wanted to have that water and sanitation turned off down there. Where Caldwell's were staying, that next fire department. And she, her bitch is that Moxley's. Got theirs shut off and they're not paying any money, even though the house there is developed. So that, that was her bitch, anyway.
Right.
Or else she would have been there. Yeah, so, just to let you know, for the information.
So why did the Moxley, said Moxley? Why aren't we charging them?
John Klein owns it. John Moxley's on a nursing home in Lewiston for years now and. I guess John Klein must have asked the prior council to take the meter out. I don't know, I wasn't there.
They removed.
They removed.
Yeah, there is, there is no meter there to.
And it's improved property and it has a home on it.
We should be installing a meter there now.
And charge him for it?
Technically speaking.
Well, it is in the ordinance.
I mean, yeah.
Like we need to take a good look at that ordinance.
I think so.
Now John Klein is really gonna not like you.
Well, I mean, I can see maybe the water meter on approved property. I can't see especially like the sanitation.
Yeah, I can't either. And my thing is, is like, you know, where, you know, Penny's property is, I totally get not wanting to, you know. But don't take the meter out.
No, just lock it out.
Yeah, I just lock it.
But the reason for having the ordinance.
Right.
That every improved property had to have a meter was so that we could get enough people paying for water to.
To keep the water.
Water system going.
Right. To keep the base rate up to.
Yeah.
The system.
Yeah, because then if you, if you have a hundred meters and one goes away, everybody's, everybody's, um.
Water should actually rate, should go up to replace that water meter being removed. Because we're still having to.
All right, I changed my thought on that.
Yeah, it, it's.
I mostly the sanitation part, I don't, I don't agree with.
Especially if, again, I guess back to a question I started to ask. What's our new sanitation, northwest or? Inland Northwest sanitation. Can we change the number of houses on a monthly basis?
I don't think they would be very happy with that. They.
So we're in the same situation we were within with Nadel and if you're gonna pay for X number of houses, period, understood?
Yep, we have to pay for it whether they get trash picked up or.
Well, then that case, you have to have sanitation because we're paying for.
Yeah, see, I didn't know that.
Yeah, we're paying for it whether.
So we're not paying per house?
No.
We, well, no, they counted up.
We have a certain amount that we have to pay.
Pay per, 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 per container.
We're paying a dollar for per, the container, but we're paying twen-, uh. I forget.
Eighty six or whatever it is.
We're paying some odd dollars for each house.
Pay per house and we pay tonnage also.
Yeah.
That's all included in.
That twenty five dollars.
Right.
So if you have five people in the city that wanna be snowbirders and don't want their trash on their bill.
Everybody else's trash.
Then we're gonna have to raise everybody else's trash during the winter to cover those people who don't wanna pay for. But it's the same with the water. This is a business. This is not, I, I, I don't like being the bad guy, but. We're running a city here. This is a business. You can't go to Walmart and say, well, I don't want to pay for the wrapper that's on this package of hot dogs.
Or, or peel all of your corn, so you only pay for the weight of the actual.
Part of the meat, yeah.
Yeah, so it's a business. I'm not here to be an ass to the citizens, but. If there are those who don't wanna pay, then everybody else is gonna have to make up that difference. That, that's just all it is. If not, we're gonna end up losing our revenue from the water and then how are we gonna run the water plant?
Well, not only that, we're, from the classes you and I have been to, we're supposed to be charging enough. That we can keep banking money to be able to replace the plant, which is a ten or.
Ten, ten to twenty year, I think.
Something like that, process.
And we're also supposed to be raising the water, uh, bills at three percent, three to five percent every year. And we're not doing that.
Which we should probably put on an action item to talk about.
We should.
So getting back to these accounts. Um, we need to make a decision on how we wanna do this.
I would say after ninety, after ninety, sixty, whatever it is, we do the accounting. Manipulation that you talked about, getting it off our accounts receivable, putting it into a doubtful collection account. I would say we also put a lock on it. Right? And I think we also have to come up with a reinstatement charge.
I think, yeah. But I think after sixty days, a letter first.
Okay. But I think it should be a reinstatement charge. In order to get that lock off, in order to get that lock off, it's a hundred dollars.
There is a charge for that.
There's a twenty dollar charge.
Well, it should be a hundred dollars or something.
Well.
Just because.
Yeah. So after, so a letter.
I don't mind making money off of people who don't pay their bills in fees.
So after sixty days, we'll write a letter. After ninety days, it comes off.
What I have been doing is on their second billing, when they didn't pay last month and they got this billing, telling them it's due by the twentieth. Otherwise, whatever the next business day is, telling them they're scheduled for shut off on that day, right on their water bill.
But I think we'd not have to be a certified letter.
No.
Why not?
I've never, I mean, I don't know, I've never sent them a certified letter before.
I've never had it certified off, so I don't know.
I did, when I went to the lab, kind of forgot to pay my bill. I don't think there was a certified letter.
No, you're probably right.
I mean, it's, it's our prerogative.
And why would we wanna spend ten dollars to something that's not paying?
It's a health and safety issue, turning off somebody's, I don't know, I just think it out loud.
It's, it is, maybe not so the, however, that's not our.
Yeah.
We can call and see what Lewiston does when they do a shut off. We can see what Orfino does when they do a shut off. I'm almost positive they do not send certified letters.
No, they don't. They call you, they will call you in Orfino and, uh, and make sure they get a contact to you. Before the water is shut off of some way, but it's usually just a phone call. Then we go in and I shut the water off. And, uh, but I usually talk to the person before I did, say, you know, fill your bathtub up full of water or something. I'm gonna shut your water off. And then they have the choice of going down the pan that day to get the water turned on. And if they didn't do it that day, then I put a lock on it, then they had to pay for the return, turn on the fee again. Yeah. So that's how Orfino does it. It was thirty days.
Do you have any, do you have any idea what the turn on fee was? Or how many years ago it was, I guess it wouldn't matter.
Yeah, it's, it's not that long ago, what, six years ago, I think. God, I can't remember, I sleep, it's over thirty five, I know that, yeah.
So I, I would just actually like to make a motion that Cindy and I'll help her write up a procedure. An exact procedure for this right here, bring it to the next meeting and see if you guys approve.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
None opposed?
None opposed, but I'd like to make another motion.
Wait, till I write the last one down, please. None opposed.
I'll, I'll check with Orfino anyway and find out their fees. So you have for next meeting.
Thank you.
We don't have any data on like total number of meters in use. We probably have that, right?
Yeah.
We have basically, we basically have about a hundred.
I might have some on that other computer.
You know what I'm talking about.
Yeah, how many we've had for the year.
There, like the ones that have been removed, the ones that have been stolen, like.
I have, I have, the updated meter spreadsheet has that info.
With this, with this whole thought of, uh.
Every one of you should have all that information on it.
We have that info.
With the whole thought of base rates paying for the water system, I mean, we should probably know. You know, some historic, we have any historical info to go off of.
I mean, that's, you'd have to increase the base rate quite a bit to start banking money for a new plant.
So I do wanna make a motion though, that we take anything unpaid off of our AR after ninety days and move it.
That's how we would part of it.
No, I think we're just gonna come up with a procedure, but it would be nice to start getting that off of there so that, because pretty soon we're about that close to being able to start get. Deploying for grants.
And we can't, we can't get that off there.
So, so, so what we do is, right now, it's on, as, it's a outstanding accounts receivable.
Okay.
It's money owed to us.
Okay.
We move it from the AR accounts receivable account.
Right.
We put it in another account.
Yeah.
But that's not part of accounts receivable.
Correct.
So it doesn't show up on our accounts receivable report.
Yeah, banks, banks won't, bank, banks don't want it on there.
Okay.
You know, grant people, they don't want it on there. They want money that they know we're gonna collect.
Right.
So you made a motion to take the past.
Move anything unpaid. After ninety. Move anything unpaid after ninety days.
Off of the AR.
Off the AR into the balance sheet.
I'll second that.
Gotta be ninety days from the date of billing.
Date of billing or date due?
Date due.
Date due.
Okay, we got Tammy made a motion, Rob seconded it, can I get all in favor?
Alright.
Motion passed. Okay. Now, do you wanna do the same thing for the?
How do we? If the person leaves a can out, they're gonna pick it up, so we can't turn it off.
Well, if they stopped the sanitation, we would go grab the can and and store it behind City Hall, if that was the case.
But are we getting into that same thing where everybody has a sanitation, we have to make everybody else gonna have to make up for it?
Yeah, I guess, I don't know.
Cause that twenty-five dollar a month fee.
I totally hear what you're saying.
Is.
Because that's another thing, when I left for a couple of months, cause I was gone for a long time, I still hadn't paid all my bills.
So did we talk to the offending party who's a snowbird and. Try and explain to them that they don't no longer have the ability, see the problem is for years they were allowed to turn off their sanitation.
Right. Were they?
Yes.
It was it was allowed for some, not all. And those who it was allowed for, it was in violation of the ordinance.
So now they're going, well, you're picking on me, I you know, I've never had a ticket for, why should I have a ticket now?
And I understand, and I will have to say, I'm sorry, here's the ordinance.
And we send them a bill for all the.
Well, I mean, they set a precedence that we are.
We need to do, whatever we do, we need to do the same thing for.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that's it.
And if we, if in the past, if anybody ever deviated from the ordinance, um it just made this a lot harder.
A lot harder.
But it'll just be a, you gotta set a precedence and kinda educate everybody, I mean, me personally, I'd love to be able to. Be like, oh, you don't have to, you know, pay for your water, your sanitation, but.
Yeah, I'm gonna be gone for the month of February, I'd love to tell my kids.
I would too, but it seems like this is just gonna be the cost of doing business.
It is.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we. We're getting by by the skin of our teeth as it is, if we continue to. Because we're eating the cost on.
Oh, yeah, right, yeah.
And again, we should, we probably should have raised sanitation more than we did. So we're actually making a little bit, you know what I'm saying, I mean.
We are a little bit.
But we should be making.
Not when you're doing things like this, cause that's eating up everything.
Right, so I mean, in all, in retrospect, maybe we should have raised it to thirty dollars, not twenty-five.
I think that's exactly what we were trying to avoid at first.
And and well, with the twenty-five dollars, going with this new sanitation and only charging the twenty-five dollars. We are still getting the dumpsters in April, the dumpsters in October for cleanups and and that's all covered by. The fees that we are charging now, we're not gonna have to put anything out of the city's budget, you know, out of the city's.
But it is added benefit.
I'm just, I'm just saying is that, you know, we should be, again, banking some money.
Right.
We're gonna have to take a look at everything.
I mean, just. A new water plant means a new skid, basically.
It we we'd have to redo it, we would, we would get a whole brand new skid, both of them.
It's not even that, it might be the holding tank in your freshwater pond and everything.
I mean, yeah, cause when when it comes.
I mean, we ought to be putting money aside right now for that holding tank, because we know that's the problem.
That raw water tank is on its last link, I mean, it is leaking like a seven.
Oh, heck yeah, there there's a crick running out of it twenty-four seven.
Right, so I'm just saying is that we should be.
We definitely should.
Determining what is gonna cost to fix.
And I think the original plan back in two thousand whatever was to. Tax it for twenty years and then replace it, and then it just never happened.
I mean, why can't we put a polypropylene or whatever it is?
Like a liner inside, oh, yeah.
That that's an idea that we've had with someone in the past, that we just put. Um, a opaque one right there, we can actually raise a little bit higher, so we don't have the gravity problem feeding into there. But that that's a whole project that we'd have to plan out and do.
Those tanks don't cost that much.
Yeah, well, to get them, to get a tangible dollar amount that we could actually shoot for, we'd probably have to hire an engineering firm, we come up and do a site survey of the. Area to give us a, you know.
I don't know how cities work, but what I used to do. Is when I had got a check. Say like you have water checks, you know, every amount you spend for water, you get those checks and you, there's a percentage that just went right out. Into it, into a different account that never got touched.
Right.
You know, and I don't know if this, if there's Idaho rules.
Right.
For municipalities that would.
You can't do more than a certain amount probably, there's something like that.
Yeah, but I mean, it's just, it's basic, really, it's like you doing it at your home, you do it anywhere else, you just took a percentage out of those water checks.
I if if I'm not overspeaking, that would be what the IRG account, water account, savings account is for.
LGIP.
IGI.
LGIP.
The one that has thirty-five dollars in it?
No, thirty thousand, thirty-two thousand, something like that.
But we're still supposed to be on number two, there's not been a motion to that.
So, cause it's five cents a gallon, if you go pick a. And they put a two-time premium of that to.
We don't have, uh and we were.
Kinda make up for people not paying into the system like this.
Yeah, but we're still getting charged for it.
I'm not a hundred percent sure.
If they're just snowboarding, the can stays there, just like the water meter stays there.
No, they they to get the can back, they gotta make up their bill.
No, it's not that they're paying their water bill, they're. They're paying, they just don't want to be billed while they're gone. Right, because historically.
Right, yes.
Historically, they've been able to stop it in the past, and at the moment, we currently have somebody on a stoppage.
Have you?
Yes.
And that's what we said.
That's why we're trying to get this figured out.
We're going to be discussing this in January, we will get back to you and let you know what the council says on this, because according to our ordinance. We're not supposed to do this. But they but they've always done it in the past, I understand that, but we're in the present, not the past, and the ordinance says that we cannot. Says we cannot do that.
Yeah, yeah, I say we charge them.
So a motion? Yeah, I would make a motion to not charge, I mean, to charge it, to make, I think that they should continue billing. Write a letter to them with the ordinance attached, so that they can read it, send it out and continue billing them, that's just.
And then the letter say that we will not be asking you for past, you pick past payments.
Right, yeah, yeah, I mean, you have to honor it up until.
Today.
Technically speaking, we could go back retroactively to bill.
But yeah, that I mean, let's, yeah.
I'm not saying we have intention to do it, I'm just letting them know that we could.
Tammy made the motion.
I'll second it.
Rob seconded, can I get all in favor?
Alright, good, Tammy, can you state your motion again?
To continue payment. Right, and then to bill. To continue to bill and to start billing the ones that are not being billed, the one that's not being billed. For sanitation. Write a letter stating our reasons for doing that. Copy it, send a copy of the ordinance, attach that to the letter with it, send it out to mail them and then. Bill as per usual.
Basically, we're gonna follow the ordinance.
Mm-hmm, yeah, yes.
So Tammy made the motion, John seconded, or Rob seconded it, all in favor?
Alright.
None opposed? Motion passed. Okay. Yeah, twenty-eight years, that's all I did was make noise.
Everything we decided.
Basically, number three has already been addressed.
Yeah, number three's been addressed. So number four, the uh from our working session, we uh tabled the. DEQ and EPA boiling boil order process or procedure until today's meeting.
I mean, that was.
You weren't at the work session, uh.
Justin had some ideas on that.
DEQ, Justin spoke with DEQ and the way we have been doing water boil orders. In the past. Was not according to DEQ. Um, we were being told to call a boil order for raw water. Which DEQ says you never call a boil order when you have a raw water line break, it's not, it hasn't even made it to the plant to get the meter. The drinking water. So uh Justin having individuals, did you wanna call him?
Yeah, um uh waiting for him to get up on here, um and as soon as he's ready, I'll let him talk. About some of the um going through with DEQ and IRWA with the um apprenticeship program. And then we'll talk about this.
Actually, the the apprenticeship should probably wait till we get done with the last schedule. Actually, we have a second session, so do we want to let him speak on the uh. Apprenticeship before?
No, isn't that an executive session type of stuff?
I would think so, I would think so.
Yeah.
But it's it's just informational.
Yeah, right, yeah, yeah, that's not for.
Executive session.
Yeah.
Right, so that's.
It has no bearing or cost on the city or anything.
Right, so I what we should do is let him go ahead and discuss the apprenticeship.
Okay.
Or is that what you're saying?
I was saying do the boil order and then, I mean, whatever, whatever works out.
You've got the guy on the phone getting it all, yeah.
So this is gonna be apprenticeship and then when? And boil orders. When and how we're supposed to do boil orders?
Correct. Okay. Hello, Gary, can you hear us?
Have you been listening the whole time?
Yeah, I can.
Okay. This is our council right here, um they just want to hear a little bit about the apprenticeship program, I talked to them about it. Uh during a work session, um a week ago or something like that, and Gary Severs. Correct, that's how you say it?
Severs, yes, correct.
Okay, um and yeah, just any questions they might have and kinda what you can tell them.
So where do we wanna start with?
Awesome, yeah, I'm happy to answer any questions that you that you might have in regards to the apprenticeship program and. Um, I'm here for you.
So can we start with maybe uh explaining the apprenticeship program a little bit to us?
Sure, you bet, happy to, so Idaho Rural Water um has the um. The only the apprenticeship program for drinking water and wastewater in the state of Idaho, um it is registered with the s- um state. Excuse me.
What's you?
I had to sneeze, I'm sorry. Um, it's registered with the State Department of Labor and also the uh Federal Department of Labor. Um, we do that through our, in conjunction with our National Rural Water Association as well. Um, so we kind of work together on that. Um, so the apprentice program, apprenticeship uh means several things, um. If you um kinda recall, back in the olden days, there used to be, um you know, a a young individual. Used to be apprenticed to um a tradesperson who was an expert at that trade. Um, in order to learn the trade, and a lot of times they were apprenticed to them for years and years and years. Um, for a while now, though, it's been defined. Um, as apprenticeship being for two years. And it's been that way federally through the Department of Labor for quite a while, so an apprenticeship. Um, is a two-year program. Um, and our apprenticeship program has standards um that we've written and have been, that have been approved. And so the Idaho Rural Water Apprenticeship Program is, um. Well, we have three separate programs, we have a pre-apprentice program, which we're reaching out to high school kids. Uh and whatnot, uh for them, uh and that's more of a tiered program. Uh, but we also have the class, what we call a class two program, and that's for those individuals that are. Um. Geared toward um getting their licensure in the class one or class two um realm. And um then we also have a a higher licensure level, which is for class three and four. Um, those are different because um IDAPA, um Department of um. Uh Occupational Professional Licensing, uh DOPL, um their rules are written differently for class three and four. So for class two, basically what they are saying. So if we go back to class two, which is what your system would fall under. Um, they are requiring that um an individual have for a class two license to ha- have three years of experience on site. Now, we've worked really hard with them to have written into I- IDAPA code. Or rules, rather, in the rules. Um, where there's a clause in there that says three years of experience or. Um, the successful completion of an approved apprentice program. And our approved, our apprentice program is a two-year program. So um how do we define that, well, it's, um. We define it by on-the-job learning, let me, if I can share my screen. Maybe that will help you guys, are you guys able to see very well, is um or is it gonna be really tiny for you?
It's gonna be tiny.
Tiny, okay, so I won't, I won't worry about uh sharing my screen then, but. Um, so the apprentice um is in the program for two years or four thousand hours. It's two thousand hours per year. Um, they works um with a mentor that's assigned to them. In this case, it would most likely be um Mr. Barrett would be their the mentor. Um, and then they need to track their time in um a tracking program. And we set that all up for them and we do that for them, they just need to log in and record their their hours in that program. We provide all of that uh for them to do. Um, and that's through what's what we call our apprenticeship tracking um system or or ATS. Um, so they do need to track their time, it needs to be reviewed by the uh mentor and approved by them, by the mentor. Um, we also keep track of it, and then on top of that, they also need to do two hundred and eighty-eight hours of classwork. We call that related training instruction or RTI. And that's broken into four semesters, the first semester is seventy-two hours of related training instruction. And then it goes usually from September until the beginning, right before the holidays. And then there's a break and then it starts up again in January, we just started Tuesday this week um for the second semester. Or in some cases, the the fourth semester for some, um and then that ends in March. Um, sometimes it may go into April, but rarely, we do that on purpose because we want um want people to be available for projects during the warm months. Um, and then that repeats for a second year, so it's, there's four semesters of seven- seventy-two re- um. Hours of related training instruction, we provide the instruction, Idaho Rural Water does. We have um some very capable individuals that are our instructors for us. On the drinking water site, we have Eric Sieb, who is a class three and four operator. On the distribution side and treatment side. Um, and he's got oh pretty close to thirty or thirty-five years of experience. And he's an excellent um instructor, we're we're glad to have him. Um, we also have instructors on the wastewater side, but that doesn't um uh necessarily affect you guys in this case. Um, one of them, though, I will kinda toot his horn, cause he's from Coeur d'Alene. Um, AC Fisher, who used to run the wastewater treatment plant in Coeur d'Alene for decades, is our. One of our trainers for uh on the waste. AC Fisher, who used to run the wastewater treatment plant in Coeur d'Alene for decades, is our, one of our trainers for, on the wastewater side. Yeah, so that's the basics behind of it, behind it. As they attend class, we take attendance and we update their records. As far as the, in that apprenticeship tracking system, we update it. So, they don't have to worry about that. But if they miss a class, they can make that up really easy. We have e-learning modules that we've built that they can log in and access. And they also can access recordings. The nice thing about it is, for the training instruction, is that they don't need to leave their place of employment or if they're off during that day, they can also attend at home. Because all of our instruction is live instruction, but it's all provided online. And that way, we can reach everywhere across the state all at once. Let's see here. As far as calendaring for when those classes take place. So, in, in this case, it would be, let's see, let me, let me look at my, my notes here. Just really quick, I need to pull up the calendar. Do, 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 excuse me for this. Okay. Yeah, Anthony, it's Anthony, right? Is he the individual that you guys are considering enrolling?
Yes, that's correct.
So, Anthony would be, and I'm sorry, I, I, I usually, I will definitely memorize everybody's name. I get to know them very well as they enroll and become part of the program. And I apologize for not remembering your name, Anthony. Forgive me. Okay, so he would be attending classes on Wednesdays and Fridays. And I believe that's what I told you, Anthony, before, if you're there, or what I told you, Justin, before. Yeah, so, yep, Wednesdays and Fridays in the morning. And class would go from seven-thirty in the morning until eleven AM. So, it's three and a half hours, classes are in three and a half hour blocks. They get three, three hours of credit for the class because we take about a ten-minute break every hour. Online learning kind of necessitates that, otherwise they lose attention and whatnot. So, we do take, take breaks as we go along. So, that totals seven hours of their week, total per week. So, it's not a lot of time that they have to be away from work. And when they're done with class, at the eleven o'clock hour, they're right back at work. They don't have to drive anywhere to attend class. So, that's one of the perks in it. As far as costs are concerned, okay, so I'm trying to go through everything and then I'll open it up for, for questions. The costs are twenty-five hundred dollars per year, and that's for tuition. And it's six hundred dollars per year approximately, and that's an approximate number for books. Now, there are, and I've gone over this with both Justin and Anthony. Or, I'm sorry. Gosh dang, I am so bad with names sometimes. Yeah, okay, good, okay, thank you. There is financial assistance available and right off the top, we have what's called an SAEI grant that's been issued to Idaho Water. Then right off the top, we would award a thousand dollars. So, that's gonna come off the top of that, those costs. That's if he joins now because that money has to, I have to allocate that money literally this week. And then after that, it's, then it's no longer available. So, just kind of putting that out there. And then, but there's also Idaho Launch. Have you guys heard of Idaho Launch?
We're looking at twenty-one hundred dollars right off the bat, right? Is that what you're saying?
It's thirty-five, yeah, a thousand dollars right up the top, yeah. Yep, and then Idaho Launch is thirty-five hundred dollars total. And if he applies for that, he most likely will qualify for that. Idaho Launch is through the Department of Labor. And it's for Idaho residents. Adult learners qualify for thirty-five hundred dollars. Kids in high school can qualify for up to eight thousand. And that money has been, been allocated. So, if he applies for that, he most likely will get that. And then there is, he's also a member of the military. And he would most likely qualify for the, for the GI Bill or portions of it. And there are portions of the GI Bill that are exclusively allocated to apprenticeship. So, we would, and we are registered with the VA as an apprenticeship program with them. So, we would help him get that going. Now, most of those funds, just so that you guys are aware of the council, most of those funds go directly to the veteran. And then they are, they can discretionarily use it how they want to. Depending on how we set it up though, I mean, and how you guys do as far as you work it out with Anthony, you could require that some of that money go toward tuition. However, the way, when I figured it out on, on a calculator the other day. So, if we go twenty-five hundred dollars and we do that for two years, we subtract the thirty-five hundred from Launch and then the thousand dollars that's from the SAEI, that's five hundred dollars total, which we would bill over two years, that's two hundred and fifty bucks a year. So, if there's a better time, there's not a better time to enroll them than right now because the money is available now. So, that's, just wanted to share that with you. Okay, that's all I have. Do you have any questions?
So, the thousand dollars, that's a one-time for the two-year program, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, and so the five hundred dollars that you mentioned, after the grants and all, that does not take into account the six hundred dollars yearly for books, correct?
No, oh yeah, that's correct. It does not. However, we just qualified and I need to work that out with our CEO, Shelley Roberts, on how we can allocate this money. But we were just awarded a grant through DEQ for the apprentice, apprentice program. And we will be allocating some of that for books. It's most likely gonna be for the first, or the first served communities are gonna be those that are in need. And I just got the list from our National Rural Water Association for communities that fall under that list. Because it's USDA Rural Development, uh, produced, that's who gives us that list. Or that's where they get it from, rather. Impact is on it. The city of Impact is on that. So, I, I feel very confident that we can pay for the books through that grant.
All of them for both years?
Yes.
Okay. Sorry, I'm the treasurer.
No, no, that's mine. Yeah, and that's a good, that is a good question. I, I'm, yeah, I'm being sure that we can do that. We have other monies that we have gotten through our National Rural Water Association as well. And I'll have to keep you apprised of that. Or let Anthony know when, when that comes about. And they have to share it across all, all of the states that have apprenticeship programs. But it's a substantial amount of money, but I don't know how much is gonna be allocated to Idaho. We're one of the more successful programs in the nation. We have fifty-four apprentices in our program right now. And that is second only to Indiana, who they have something like sixty-something individuals in their program. So, Idaho is, we are doing well, so I expect us to be funded through that other grant. It's coming through our National Rural Water Association. I just don't know how much or what we can use it for yet. But I will let you know and, and I will let you know what it's eligible for. My guess is it's probably eligible for, well, there's a chance. I need to just, I need to say there's a chance because I can't make a commitment. But there may be a chance that it can help offset some wages. I'm really, really hoping that that's the case. So, while an apprentice is enrolled in the apprentice program, maybe you guys could get compensated for their wages a little bit. I'm crossing my fingers if that's the case.
So, in order for Anthony to start right now, how much money do you need?
Nothing. I don't need any money right now. We will send you a bill. And the bill will be, what we'll do is we'll apply all the grants from Launch, from the SAEI, the thousand dollars, and the DEQ. And once we do that, then we will send you a bill in retrospect for the previous semester. Because he's gonna have to do some makeup work. He's gonna have to go back to September and do those, do that, that classwork through e-learning modules. But then he'll be in this semester participating in live classes on the Wednesdays and Fridays that I mentioned. Yeah, so that's, that's a good question, but so stay tuned. Don't pay anything until we send you an invoice. And even that, we'll, we'll see where that falls out. Because if, I'm gonna allocate as much money as I can that is provided to the individual, you know, before we send you a bill.
And when do you have to have his application in by?
I'm sorry.
You have to have his application by when?
I need his application sooner the better.
Like tomorrow?
So, oh, that'd be great.
Okay. Okay, and so you said the thousand dollars, you needed to allocate that this week. That means by Friday in two days, is that correct?
I have to have it to the state, so it's, it's a, it's a, yeah. It, I have to issue it through the State Department of, see, the Idaho Apprenticeship, through Idaho Apprenticeship.
No money.
So, but they're a subsidiary of Department of Labor. I have to do that by the tenth, which is Friday.
It's the application. Yeah, no money. Okay. So, the application, if we can get it into you tomorrow, email it to you before three o'clock. Will that work?
Even if you got it to me Friday morning, I would, that'd be perfect.
Friday morning is good enough, okay.
Yeah.
That way I won't sweat it too bad. We have, we have to get it approved through the council, but I just wanted to know deadlines, when we have to have this in by, if it gets approved.
Yeah. Yep, yeah, that's, that's great. And, and just so you know, he will end up prepared. We don't guarantee that they pass their exams, but they should because they're gonna get a really robust education. But it's gonna prepare Anthony for, in the end, after the two years for his Class Two license. So, even though you guys are Class One, he will be ready to go for Class Two, so.
Awesome.
Yeah.
Anything else?
Boil orders?
Boil orders. That's gonna be up next, so.
Yeah, we're all good for, with apprenticeship.
Okay.
Thank you very much, Gary.
Yeah, you're welcome. Thank you. Take care.
You have a great night. Okay, ended out. That was tied up in everything I had talked about, so I wanted to brief with it. But boil order, I talked to them, I talked to DEQ, EPA, Lewiston, Orophino, Camei. The preventative boil orders that we have been doing, no one else does. Even DEQ and EPA, they've said that they're nice to do. If you're worried about anything, like if you're doing a repair, you have your positive water pressure, but you look over and you see a hose and a water trough coming off of a hose bib, you might want to do something like that. But by, by law and by rule of DEQ and EPA, a boil order isn't triggered until you have a bad E. coli sample, or Bakti is what it's called through there. And then at that point, you do your boil order. You make sure, you, you pump up your chlorine, redo everything, redo your sample, send them in. You do, say, this building right here, that's where your sample was taken before. You pop a bad sample, then you have to go one up, one down, send in those two samples. And if those are okay, then you're okay.
Boiler, boil order applies until you paint the sample.
Correct.
You don't have to implement it until you get a bad sample.
Correct. One thing, working with Orophino, one of the things that my boss over there, Mike, has offered for us is the Bakti samples that are reported to DEQ have to go through ANATEC. Someone passed a bill a couple of years ago that you have to have a laboratory degree in order to do this. I think it was someone padding their job. But any construction samples or just samples that we don't have to report to them, we don't have to go through ANATEC. And Mike has offered, if we'd like to set up a deal with them, to just do those kind of samples there. So, we can do them, I can run them.
So, what, what would trigger having to send this? Send something to ANATEC, I mean, what's? Why would you send it, why would you ever send a sample to ANATEC? And not, I mean, what's the difference?
Yeah, so, basically, our monthly samples that I send every month, our Bakti samples, that has to go to ANATEC. Because that gets directly reported to DEQ. If we pop a bad sample and we have to be put on a boil order, the samples to come off of that boil order have to be sent to ANATEC.
So, it would be the monthly sample that would trigger the boil order?
Uh, it can. But one thing I'd still like to do is when we do a repair, still take that Bakti sample. Just to make sure we're, we are okay. Because you don't technically have to take it if you keep positive pressure. But the way our system is, personally as an operator with the license, I would like to do that.
So, you're taking that one to ANATEC as well?
The, right now. That sample does not have to go to ANATEC. That one can go to Orophino. The only other one that has to go to ANATEC is if we have new construction, putting in a new water meter. We have to do.
That's the same thing as repair, really, right?
Pretty much, and that, that has to go to ANATEC as well. But these smaller repair samples, we can send to Orophino. It's the same lab cost, right now it's fifty-five dollars, but we don't have to pay the twenty-dollar courier fee. I can tell you exactly when it's done. It's a twenty-four hour sample. And the moment I walk in and it's, say I put it in at ten o'clock, ten o'clock the next day, I can send you guys a call or a text, we're good to go. We don't have to wait a day and a half, two days for ANATEC to get it done. And it's right down the road. You don't have to pay for any time to do it.
And it'd be quicker for us to know whether we had to go on boil order.
Correct.
We wouldn't have to go on boil order till the sample from Orophino came back and said, oh, you got something in your lawn.
Yep.
So, what happens if we lose pressure?
If we lose pressure, then potentially, because each meter doesn't have its own backflow device right now, it can pull water from any.
No, I mean, who are you sending a sample to?
Oh, if, if we lose pressure, if it, if we positively lose pressure. Oh, if, if we lose pressure, if it, if we positively lose pressure, and we know like this last one. People were calling saying, there's no water coming out of my tap, it's just air, that has to go to Anatech. Um, if it's, if we're able to seal everything off, we have a good little comfort right there. We crack one valve, so we have that positive pressure coming in, we don't have to send that to Anatech. Which that should be the majority of repairs.
For example, things like, last year and this year, people were doing work on the water system, right? And it's like, I remember the one, a couple of the ones that went on last year with the new meters. It was like, all of a sudden, oh, you know, notice. I mean, can't people give us like, they have, if somebody's gonna do something to the water system, it's not a repair, they should have to do at least a seventy-two hour notice.
It, it, you, everyone should be notified before the water ever gets shut off.
That's right.
They should have plenty of time to fill up the tub, to fill up the buckets, to fill up pots and pans, whatever, before the water gets shut off.
Or the last week or week before, whatever, Cindy calls me up at. Three o'clock and says, oh, there's not gonna be any need for the boiler, dah dah dah, and an hour later.
Oh, that was, that was a while, that wasn't last week.
A couple weeks ago, but I'm just saying is that, I mean, and it's like, when they re, put in a new meter last year. It's like all of a sudden, it was calling everybody and everything else that night. I mean, why the hell couldn't they put, say, oh, by the way, Wednesday at four o'clock, I'm putting in the meter?
I- if there's scheduled repairs, we should be doing that, and that, that'd be one thing that the site and the notifications that go out on.
Yeah.
Website, we're doing that. Where now we don't have to call everybody, because we have the website, the website will alert everyone, if they get signed up on it. We're not spending six hours on the telephone, calling every single person in the community.
Well, and they get texts too.
And, and they get texts and emails with the website.
Six hours to call them and six hours to call them back until it's done.
That's what I'm gonna say, so.
Well, yeah, and then not having any notice or anything, everybody's water's already out by the time she's getting towards the end, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
It's, so, we definitely need to do a notice thing.
The website is very important, it's a good thing that we have, because it, not only does it give you alerts, it sends you an email, and it sends you a text. If you sign up, if you sign up for.
Are we doing anything with that information?
Yes, we're sending it out in the water bill.
No, 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 with his information. Did he just, did, say to us?
That's what we're, we're gonna vote on, do we want to?
Yeah, I would, I would make a motion that we, if we have a break in the water system, that we take the sample that we're Orifino. And versus take it up to Anatech.
But also there was information about when we call a boil order.
When we get that sample back, if it's, if it's bad, then we call a boil order.
We don't call a boil order automatically un- until we get a bad sample.
Until we get a bad sample, or you visually see.
A problem.
A problem.
Or if it's some, yeah, catastrophic failure.
Right.
We don't even need a sample, we'll just be like, obviously we need to go into a boil order, but, pressure loss.
I second. All in favor?
Alright, it just makes too much sense.
Motion passed.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, if, obviously if it popped positive. You'd have to go into boil order, and then the subsequent test to get us off the boil order would have to be through Anatech.
Yes, let's go.
Okay.
Okay, moving on to number five, schedule the next working session. To follow up on updating ordinances and developing city codes, and any other. Business that might come up between now and then that we need to deal with, with these other ordinance and stuff.
Keep in mind, Tammy's gonna be gone in February, and I'm on jury duty all month.
Hopefully not.
I leave on the seventh.
Of February. So, so not all of February, before the end of January?
We can have it, we can have it in January, we can have it.
First week in February.
First week in February.
And when is your jury duty eligibility start?
February first.
Okay, we better do it in January.
So, we have the week of the twenty-seventh of January, the twenty-seventh is a Monday. And the thirty-first is a Friday, so any of those days in between.
Thirty-first is good, unless nobody else wants to do it on the Friday night.
You can do the fourth question during the day.
Yeah, I was gonna say, uh, I, yeah, Tuesdays and Thursdays during the day work the best for me.
I get back Monday mornings, so.
Are you traveling?
Well, now you're going.
We already.
So, twenty-eighth?
When's our dentist, no, it's in February, isn't it? If we keep that one.
February tenth.
But the eye doctor's the thirtieth, right? Thirty-first?
Good thing you're here, Gene.
Tammy's gonna be going after seven, so.
My calendar is wide, is that, that's the twenty-eighth?
Uh huh.
Yeah, I have nothing going on right now.
The twenty-eighth, too. January twenty-eighth?
I can get the timeline.
And pack a lunch for that one.
Yeah, pack a lunch.
I'm working beer for a minute.
Yeah, yeah.
Make another big promise again.
Soup in the kettle.
I wanna start at nine, so you can be done earlier.
Yeah, why not?
Yeah, I, I, I can start at nine.
So can I get a motion to have the meeting on Tuesday, January eighth at nine AM?
January, January eighth, no.
Twenty-eight, twenty-eight. Twenty-eight.
I second Milton's motion.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passed. Alright.
Be a good time to bring out those reports.
Yeah.
Yeah, um. We're supposed to go into an executive session, but uh. With the time, where the time is at right now. I would suggest that we put off the uh, executive session until next month's meeting. On the twelfth, I believe it is, February twelfth.
I was just gonna ask, so are we gonna go forward with doing that?
Yeah.
They, they were just saying, they're going to executive session. So, no, no, to approve Anthony's uh, apprenticeship, we, yeah, we need to go back to that.
So, the caveat on that is, I'm still waiting to hear back on the VA for doing the disabled side of it.
But we still don't have.
But if I don't do it now, we're gonna miss out on all the, the shitty they said.
Right.
I do have twelve months left on my other GI bill. Which would be, again, a little bit faster, but it's like, I don't have to dip into it for a couple hundred bucks, like.
We just get through.
It, it took me, it took me three or four months.
It's supposed to say, like, I'm like, if we pull the trigger now, I could essentially be set up to do my class one this year.
And I'd, I'd donate my little forty-dollar paycheck back to the city anyway, so I've got one, we can just throw it towards whatever the first bill is.
Right, I just, I just need to know if we're gonna greenlight that or not.
Yeah, I make a motion to send Anthony to apprenticeship.
Yes, I second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm not gonna vote, I don't think he worked for us long enough.
Okay, all opposed?
I said I wasn't gonna vote. Well, I just, I don't think he worked for us long.
Motion passed with majority.
Okay.
Okay. Now, did we make a motion for the working session, did we pass that?
We did that, yeah.
Okay, um.
Milton moved, Rob seconded.
All approved, correct?
Yep.
Uh, yeah.
Executive session.
I moved that the executive session be deferred until February. Can we do a working session?
Nope.
No, cannot make any decisions during a working session.
Right.
So, can I get a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Move to February. February twelfth will be the next council meeting. Uh, Cindy, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Yes. Milk, no, two seconds, no, two seconds, didn't that?
I did.
Mine's good, I need to buy stamps again, there's seventy-three dollars a roll now, I'm gonna.
Yeah.
Ask for three rolls. Yep, um, I need two hundred and ninety, two hundred and ninety dollars. I already ordered the W twos and W threes, that was fifty-seven nineteen, because that must have been, no matter what we all say. Just saying.
Rob?
You can do them on a line for five dollar a deep.
What?
You can do them on a line for five dollars each. You don't have that many.
I already ordered them, I think we should have them in a file.
No, you, you get a, I mean, you file for business, you, you, you pay per document, it's like five dollars and seventy cents. They send it to the people, they file with the IRS, and you print a copy to your file. Really easy.
I did not know that.
Well, where were you at the other day when we were talking about this?
And then.
That's what I've done for years, it's cheaper than ordering all.
I've never heard of it, okay, let's, let's get through this.
A five pack of USB drives, they're thirty-two gigs, so they should last a while for backing up things, it's eighteen fifty-nine. So a grand total of two hundred and thirty-seven fifty-nine, not counting what was already working.
What about your cloud storage problem?
Well, then, that was addressed earlier, nobody said what you all wanted to do about that, they were testing and.
It was.
That was, that was a lot of that stuff.
Yeah, but if we're gonna do the three sixty-five, then that would end up going on that, so I thought the, the motion was to. Try that and address it next month, so I figured I was just getting by till next month.
Yeah, we probably should have had that in there as a separate act, I think.
Yeah.
The fact of the matter is, the computer in City Hall isn't getting backed up.
Uh, on the hard drive and.
Well, it is on a hard drive, but it's not on, I think, and then you're gonna have that same problem again.
Right.
That we had the other day.
Do you want an external hard drive?
No, we have one, but the problem is, is that because some of the files that she's using more, most often. Are the ones she's using, therefore when it goes to back up, it won't, it won't even save them. Because Microsoft wants to keep them online, and therefore you lose the file.
What can you do as save as and put it on the hard drive?
It doesn't, you can do that, but it's difficult.
No.
Okay, we need a motion to get this taken care of before we move to something else.
Well, let me throw in two dollars a month then, for extra cloud storage on my request.
It takes you from five to five free to one hundred.
Perfect.
For two dollars a month?
And give you Microsoft three sixty bucks for two dollars a month.
Well, that's sweet.
So that's something you might actually think about, because instead of the, the seven dollars a dollar a month.
Okay.
For seven dollars a month for like.
It's seventy-two dollars a year.
Right, but it's for seven uses or something like that, so, you have to look.
A lot of people look at it, but I mean, I would approve the two bucks stuff, the cloud storage for the city.
We can always take, we can always take it off.
Well, we need to approve the whole list.
Yeah.
Yes, I second that.
Okay, Rob, Rob made the motion to approve everything?
Yes, everything.
And then Tammy seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
Passed.
Have we done?
We have maintenance and water.
I don't think, did you have something?
Yeah, just a couple of quick things anyway, um, the other day, uh. I put a plug in outside on the shop down there, so I could, um, cause. What we had was extension cords coming out of this window, hanging there, and they run it out to the equipment anyway. Plugged into it, a plug in inside the shop, so it was more of a pretty bad fire hazard, either, just like one of those poor plug in there. It's got all massive cords coming off of it, so I took and ran, I found a roll of twelve-two Nomex wire, I ran a wire out in the shop. Out down this pole, and I put in a light switch and a plug in out there, cause I'm gonna put a light out in that, your whole light in that shit and all of that.
That'd be nice.
Pop a light in there anyway, the problem I ran into is this, this fuse box in the shop. They took and ran a two-twenty wire out of the City Hall fuse box, ran it up to into here. And they just kinda frayed everything off of that two-twenty, yeah, no shit, no, this two-twenty plug in, all the plug ins. In the shop and, and uh.
Yeah, I don't, I don't say wow.
Yeah. I would, I would recommend that we get a, a fuse box put inside the shop, so we can run all these wires into it anyway sometime. I am trying to find a U, or I was gonna snag a U's.
Yeah.
Fuse box out of the old trailer house I have up there, I don't know what it looks like and stuff, but anyway, this is something that probably shouldn't be addressed anyway.
Well, Leroy, I don't think we need to recycle old fuse boxes, let's, let's get the right stuff. You're issuing a junking box, you mean?
Well, it's.
Should have a certain. Should be a breaker box.
There's a breaker box out there, but it's a City Hall breaker box, and what they've done is they just ran two big wires. Out of that City Hall breaker box into the shop and up this pole.
Almost here.
And then they just.
Should be like a sub panel.
Yeah.
Yeah, just a sub panel, it's all, not really a breaker box, but just a sub.
Well, a small sub panel, but it's gonna have breakers in it.
It should, because we're running a two big, two-twenty wires out of that outside box into here, and then we run one tens off a bit.
Right.
And then that's a cluster. So, anyway, that's what I got going on there, um, let's see, what else?
I might actually have a box.
Uh, yeah, that's what I was thinking, if we threw that out there and stuff, you know, we might have a box or something, you know, um. Someday, it would be nice if this area here was uh, gated or fenced off.
Yeah.
That way I could put all that pipe that's sitting inside the shop in my way, stack it out here and stuff. And not worry about us getting everything stolen out there, lawnmowers, gas out of the equipment, whatever.
And ditches done to reroute water.
Yeah, dealing with, dealing with Diana is just a nightmare too, anyway, so.
Do, do you, are you gonna do chain link?
But sometime you might wanna think about maybe build a fence out there and stuff around that anyway.
Leroy, are you gonna do that in chain link?
Yeah, just run a chain link thing from that corner fence over here out to about that telephone pole, and then run it back over to this pole here.
I don't know how much it is, but I can donate some, I've got some chain link.
I knew a guy that had some chain link, that he got a surplus, and he was only asking, I think he was only asking a dollar a foot for it.
And we got gates from the Pec Cemetery, two big gates, three gates from the Pec Cemetery, we can put out there too, so we got those items too, so. That is something that would be nice to uh, address that anyway, um.
Yeah, I'd, I'd volunteer to help install that.
Okay, we had that water leak and stuff up there, the, the guy was digging a ditch out to his house to replace the water line. Well, he bumped our meter and broke our uh, riser anyway, and so I had to go get another riser for it and put it in there and stuff. Uh, well, we had one, but I replaced it already since then, uh. Where was I going with this?
Need to bill.
Order.
We are putting together employees to bill them for the parts, labor, um.
Oh, aggravation.
Okay, so, when I went out there, there's a valve just right out in front of uh. Palmer's place anyway, and I was told that valve shuts off the leg going up that hill. And according to the city water map, it says it did, okay, and I'm like, okay. I got that valve shut off, but it shows water coming down the pine to hit that. And so I had to go down and shut the water valve off on Marion, because it comes over and makes a loop there, so I should be able to shut those two valves off. That valve on Marion, I couldn't shut it off, I mean, I had that bar on there, and I twisted it on so hard, I bent a one-inch round bar. And it, any more than that, I would tote top the valve off, and we would have a huge disaster, so. That valve on Marion is a pretty prominent valve, we have a valve down here for it already. Sometime this summer, it'd be nice to replace that valve, make it work.
Yeah, absolutely, I'll also volunteer to help do that from around.
I think there's gonna be a couple that we're gonna have to replace.
There's, there's more than one, there's, I know of two stuck valves, they're stuck, and then I wanna go around here sometime soon, hopefully for freezes, and check all the valves. They should be exercised, supposedly, they exercise once a year, gotta get at least exercising once every five years would be great. Some of them valve covers have never been open, cause when I was opening it up, some of them valves up there, Gene come out and says, I've never seen open this valve before, yeah. And it was, it was stuck tight, so that valve on Marion is probably one of the more prominent ones that need to be fixed and stuff anyway. Uh, so that's what happened there, I couldn't get that shut off, had a water leak, I had to shut the whole town off, because. There was no way to kill the water and stuff, so that's what happened there, so. Uh, otherwise, if, if I knew it was gonna come to that, I would've gave you a bunch of head notice, a couple of days, letting you know that, okay, we're gonna have a possible town shut off. But because they lied to me about that valve shutting off. But because they lied to me about that valve shutting off, going up the hill, didn't lie to me, they just misinformation, yes, anyway, I'm not sure. Anyway, that's what happened there with that water being shut off. Okay, um, the potholes in the road, we're gonna have to dress that this spring before we mag again and stuff. Are we gonna hire Brian Dale to go ahead and bring a road grader in, and, or somebody to come in grade the roads? Or are we still maybe looking for a road grader? I mean, I found this galleon for five grand, but it's a road machine, and that's what we used in our Fino, it was just an old machine, just what grading we had to do for our Fino and stuff, so. Brian said five grand for a running road grader is not bad, you can still get parts from Gallions, some of the Clarks and Austin, you cannot anyway, so. You'd have to be selective into what kind of old road grader you bought anyway, so. Something to keep in your mind, something maybe to shop for, or maybe even shop around for somebody we're gonna have to hire to come in and grade those roads.
So, is that a working road grader at this time?
Yeah, I believe so, he's supposed to get back to me with more pictures of what kind of motor stuff is, and it, it's up at, uh, Elk City.
Okay.
So.
Well, that's a nice drive, this town.
Yeah, I know, that's what I thought too, or else I probably wouldn't have looked at, cause I thought it was a colistack.
If we probably could, well, I put that on to work at the work, uh, talk about.
I know, if we try to get, if we try to get Brian to help us out, you gotta get to him before he goes out to the wall.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, and he, yeah, and he's, he's, like he said, he's gonna have to charge you.
Yeah, I know that, yeah.
And so.
We need to do something to start improving the roads.
Are those things available to rent?
I don't know that either, I was gonna check with United and them and stuff.
I'm just saying, is it by the time you maintain it?
Yeah, yeah, I got you.
I agree, I agree, yeah, we, I would.
I don't think I've ever seen him at Hines.
Yeah, I don't. You'd have to go up to Western States and rent one for me.
Yeah, I mean, that might be something to ask, though.
Roy, like, once a year, maybe even once every couple of years, if we get them fixed.
That's right, if we get it documented up, and we stay on dressing them up and stuff, we can get by every couple of years.
Okay, Madam Mayor, I would like to make a motion that, uh, subject to Leroy's discretion, when he inspects that, uh, grader, it's, he says it's worth the, the five thousand dollars that we buy it.
Okay, now Brian Dale's helped me with this, so I take him with you wherever I be, something like this, so you're getting two opinions, not just mine, so, yeah, okay. But I would definitely notify whatever we had to do to make it all work.
Okay, Milton made a motion to.
Did I put, yeah, I put the amount on there?
Five thousand?
Yeah, right.
Five thousand dollars for a grader at Leroy's discretion, if it's worth it, does anybody wanna second that?
The only reason why I'm hesitant to second it is, we started talking about renting a piece of equipment right after that.
Yeah.
Except if you rent it, you're gonna have to pay to haul it.
Sure.
But overall, you gotta maintain it and everything else, I mean.
And there's not just the road maintenance that needs to be done, there's road like the water plant road stuff, that needs to have the ditches pulled in and crowned, put back in the road with ditches and everything, and that's not just some little one-day job. I mean, it is a one-day job pretty well, I could probably do it in a day myself, but.
And there's the old Melrose city portion of the grade up there that needs worked on, there's Angel Ridge grade that needs worked on, city portion. There's new Melrose back here.
Yeah, in two spots, yeah, yeah, so, something to think about there for sure.
Can we use?
I'd like to get a better, I'd like to have a better picture of our finances.
Yeah, I ain't gonna do anything now, I'm just trying to throw it out there, but.
Five thousand dollars is not huge money, but it's a lot of money.
Yeah, if buying a piece of junk, yes.
That's what I'm worried about, I bought, I, you know, I had, I had a heavy equipment before, and.
I know.
When they start breaking down, you spend more time fixing them than renting them.
If we had to fix the motor, this five thousand dollar grader, it probably might be ten grand.
Yeah.
Yeah, I totally agree, I understand, yeah, yeah, so that's why I'm looking at all the options of hiring it done, renting a grader, or buying a grader. So, that's where we're at right now, anyway, so. Um, this guy's just no hurry to sell his galleon, always biting on it right now, so I could probably get it for less, so.
So, so you think, I mean, would waiting until our working session be?
Yeah, I can do that.
Except we can't make the, we can't make the.
We can't make the decision at the working session. It'd have to be the February meeting on the twelfth.
Oh, he'll probably be gone.
But i- if he can give us information, or, you know, working session, we could have a chance to think about it.
Well, give us some ideas, some food for thought, okay, let's check out rentals too, and let's see what it's gonna cost to hire too.
Right.
And, and, and let's go from there, so.
Was there a second?
No.
Motion died, then, okay.
Okay, yeah, so let's just do some research on it, and I want to get that in your head anyways, the only reason I bought it.
Not completely yet, yeah.
No, it's okay, but, uh, just, can you use those things to like carefully move snow if you need to?
Move what?
Graders.
Move snow.
That's what they grade my road.
Oh, yeah, yeah, and like Brian's grader, it has a wing on it, you know, God forbid it ever gets so bad a tech that we have to move the snow back and stuff. But I've seen years like that before, we've had to.
Well, that's why I'm bringing it up.
But, but the Toby, Toby Mills thing, I mean, if the rental there doesn't take out, then you might, if he wants five, the city might authorize three.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And just say, hey, this is what they're willing to pay.
Right, yeah, yeah, absolutely, yeah.
All right, now, that's food for thought, okay, now we're back to, uh, the Dale situation. I guess, discuss that, or you wanna wait till your, your session, or what, we gotta?
Well, we can wait, cause we got these new, these new documents.
Okay.
We can go into, in the working session, we can go into greater details, but we do need to, uh, schedule a time for Rob and Milton and I meet with you on Friday to go look at that.
Okay, go out and read and walk around and see.
When everything's.
Isn't it, isn't it a done deal already with Kenya, we've already made the land swap and road swap?
Sort of, we, we indicated to her that we were willing to do it by the end of.
By July.
Except that we never found what had been agreed to with the, uh, previous administration, there was nothing.
Yeah, yeah.
There was nothing in the minutes that detailed it at all.
Yeah, and I don't think there was.
I think it was kind of, oh, yeah, that looks good.
Yeah, so, okay, we have made that official swap, yeah.
No, during the working group, we discussed all the, when you talked about all the potential roads, you know, tying it in. It was looking like.
Yeah.
Minus this field trip that we could go on, it was looking like it would be in every, both parties' best interest.
Okay, I'll do a quick, I'll do a quick run-through here, uh, if we were to had to build our own road into there per se, this road here going up, and that was North Road?
North.
Yeah, North Road, going up, it's pretty steep right through here and stuff, but it could be done. It all depends where this pin is in this corner, how far we can hug that road over, because there's a lot more material and dirt to work with, with, and make that climb more gradual over here than it is over here. Or, we can come up and turn and make a climb through here, which this is a city street here, or was, I don't know what you said.
We're looking into that.
Looking into that, if that's still ours or not even, okay, climb up, make the road that way. Either way, we look at it, we gotta divert that water line, okay, so, we can divert that water line from the water plant. You've seen that barn up there, and that, that with the hay and stuff, that's actually on that city street, that is not on Dale property at all, okay? That is on the city street, that water line needs to run through and almost clip the corner of that barn in order to make it work to this ditch. If you wanted to run it down the ditch of our road and out, okay? If we built it our own road in and stuff, then we could run that water line down and down through the center of our road right away with a ditch, not have to put a pipe in and stuff, but this way here, I'm thinking you're gonna have to go with a pipe to go and make this work, yeah. There, uh, oh shit, what do I got here, all right, let's see, here we go, uh, here is the barn, and here's the stake, and here's where the pipe would come through, it'd have to come around and follow the, the, the property line around to the barn, and then over to the pond anyway. So, um, here you can see the stake there, and the water line would run through here over to that pond, if you brought it around to this road anyway. And there you can see there, anyway, there's a big natural spring right here with water running down over her hillside anyway. So, I don't think she realizes how much water is actually pouring out of that hillside on her property, and it's not.
Problem of the dam.
So, I don't think she's totally aware of that at all, anyway, anyway, you see the hump up here?
No, as long as you don't.
Behind the barn, make that water run down there, you know, there's the barn and stuff anyway. And that, that I believe that that is on all Oriole City property, I don't know how it works, there's something in the past, who knows?
Uh, try to gravity feed the best we can.
Yeah, this would be the start. The property line runs really close here, I don't know where the, the, there's a stake over here, so I think we got a lot of room here to work, and if we use material to make a grade going up there, if that came down to that situation, okay? So, I'm just telling you like what I found out, and like I say, I like to walk out with you guys, and.
Yeah.
So, do we have a time then for Friday?
Yeah, if you want to, yeah.
What's good?
Anytime you do for me Friday.
Nine, ten?
Nine, ten, it's fine.
Nine sixteen. Nine sixteen, everyone made at the water plant.
So, nine o'clock?
Yeah.
Friday morning?
Nine o'clock, yeah, I can get up there.
Thirty-two seconds.
Made where, made at the water plant or made at the City Hall?
Thirty-two and a half.
I said we need to plant.
Okay.
Okay, or the bottom of the plant, well, you have to plant, move me if you plant.
Yeah, nine, nine o'clock at the plant.
I like it, yeah, so.
So, you're gonna have to be there at eight fifty-nine?
I'm gonna have to put my pants on, I guess.
And here's where that road would come out at, it would be right here if you went, okay, anyways, on the, where the water tank is and stuff, that's where that road would come out at anyway, so. Anyway.
It'd be nice.
I think that's about all I got, um, yeah.
I am freezing, I'm making motion, we all moved to the bathroom.
I came in this, this morning, and I turned that heater on all the way, cause I wanted it to go ahead and keep the.
Oh.
So, we could shut it off, so it stays warm all over here.
And it just seems like it's gotten colder. Because it's a three-hour fricking council meeting.
Almost.
It's almost like he just had a.
Maybe I'll want a clock more, we can make it three hours.
Done.
I have one thing, I handed you out a thing about the siren system.
I saw it.
And, uh, I've got a little show and tell, if you wanna hear it, but basically, this is the plan, and, uh, this is how we could use it, this is how we would use it, uh, you put the notice on the website, and once that was done, you could ring the siren, and then people could say, what in the world is that noise?
Yep.
And they go to the website and find out.
Yeah, it'll prompt people, because there's a lot of people that aren't gonna say no.
Right.
Yeah.
And so, that would be in City Hall.
That would be, you know, I have four speakers like that, I'll, if you want, if you wanna hang around for two minutes, I'll play, play it for you.
What did you have for a lot of time?
So, just a couple.
Are you done Leroy?
I'm done.
Just a couple things, um, lead and copper.
Yep.
I got told by Jason Frank, they have moved all testing back to twenty twenty-seven.
Oh, sweet.
So, we do not, we just have to do.
So much feet pushing it from water ditch.
Yeah, well, cause I think it was only twenty.
Everybody was talking about at the meeting.
It was only like, when I heard it, twenty percent of cities actually finished their inventory.
Yeah.
So, we, we are, what is it like, we're like top ten in Idaho.
Yeah, that's cause you know how big we are, I mean, they had big cities in there that had every problem in the book, that they were discussing.
Even small towns like us.
Top ten, and, and the battle I went through to get that lead and copper report done?
You should get a grant.
You, you get props, you get props.
Be the top ten for reporting?
That, that's what the guy had said, he, he said he believes we're in the top ten.
I don't think we're in the top.
He just said we're in the top ten, that's what I heard. Put it on a plaque.
There we go.
I'm just saying, that, that was a headache.
Yeah.
Are we done?
Oh.
No, I got some more.
Okay.
Hold on, he's still got one more thing.
I, I got a couple more, uh, I did a CIP on SKID two, um, during it, the heater from two thousand one caught fire on me, um, so, I'm just bringing this up, cause we don't have to do another CIP for a year on that thing. But in that time, I, I'll bring it up next meeting, I'd like to buy two to have, because on SKID one, it's from two thousand one as well.
Yeah, yeah.
So.
I'm the one to replace the thing, too.
Okay. Um, but, that's just kind of for next time, um, the Anatech spending, I need to look into, I'm talking to DEQ right now. Looking at our scheduled forecast, we have almost ten samples that, some of them, uh, we've had since like two thousand seven to do, and all ten of them are due this year, so I'm going back on previous records, trying to talk to DEQ and Anatech to see if we've done any of these, or if we haven't. So, I'll, I'll report back to you guys next time to see if we've done them or not, or which ones have been done. I'm hoping they've all been done, I think the, the shortest time one on there is like three years, so I'm hoping it's done. Um, uh, I had one more, but I can't remember.
Can you give us that information by the work session on the twenty-eighth?
Yep, I, I think I have it on this computer, I can just email it out, um. I think that's it, anything?
No, just maintenance stuff, but we can bring it up during the work session.
Yep, so, I think water plant's good.
Running like a champ?
Nice.
Yeah, going good.
Okay, Simon?
This is a short message for a, just for a maintenance test, uh, that you, and you announced this ahead of time in your thing, so people wouldn't go.
Was it getting scary?
No, so, all, all the, all the person has to do at City Hall is take the thumb dryer, plug it in, and start.
This message will be followed by a brief silent sound effect, after the siren, there will be a final message. No further action is required on your part.
Yeah.
That's cool.
Alarm blast, mop four.
I was there again.
I know, right?
Damn it, I can't do it.
I gotta go take a drink.
Yeah. Take my meds now.
Just to remind me of the show hash.
Yeah. Okay.
That's slick.
Yeah, I'm in halfway through the. The, the, uh, the voice is kind of, I got the voice cleaned up some better than that, uh, on the longer one, but I'll keep working on that.
Thank you for coming, Gene, that's great.
Uh, Leroy, we need to, I have four of these, yeah, I need to get them on some kind of a tower or something.
I can go back.
Okay.
That'd sound good.
Can I have, can I have you sit down at your spot, and everybody sit at their spot, so I can do a group picture of all of us?
Then you'll have evidence that I was there.
Oh, man.
Yeah, yes, yes, we're, we're gonna do that.
Yeah.
Kind of dressed pretty, I don't know.
Man, I wore my holy shirt and everything.
Look at me. I just showed you. When you get us all in there, you fart in the back.
Scoot together.